Okay, good morning everyone. Time is 9:30, it's Tuesday, July 1st. We could go ahead and start the meeting this morning. Jamie, if you can please do the roll call.
Commissioner Mulcahy.
Here.
Commissioner Henson.
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
Here. So everyone can please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, I just need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second. I think we had one, if I can just say. If I can just add a friendly amendment for motion to approve the agenda and we would like to move the county attorney. Item 7B1. Or would we like that? After the. We'll do it right before awards and presentations.
Yep.
Okay, great. So.
Motion to approve the amendment as presented?
Second.
But. Is our screen okay?
Yeah. Good morning everyone, so we'd like to move item 7B1, the county attorney report, up in our agenda. So we're gonna have just a little bit of a change. Heidi, if you want to do the presentation and then we'll go from there.
Good morning Commissioners. It is my pleasure to get to introduce the contract officially naming Dion Stroder as our Adams County Manager. A copy of the contract is included in the packet. And I know that Dion has some things that she would like to say, but I think we should probably vote first. So Commissioners, I would ask that you approve the contract naming Dion Stroder as the County Manager.
So moved.
Second.
And the motion passes 5 to 0, congratulations Dion. So Dion, if you'd like to see, come up to the podium, say a few words and then we'll go to Commissioner comments.
Alright, good morning, thank you very much. I appreciate your vote this morning and also I thank you for giving me a few minutes to share some comments with you all today, with all of you as well. For those of you I haven't met, my name is Dion Stroder and I'm deeply honored that you have affirmed my appointment as the next Adams County Manager. It is truly the highlight of my career to share this moment with all of you, with my family, with our amazing Adams County employees, and with our residents who are joining this public hearing either here in the room or on our weekly livestream. I do want to give a quick shout out to my daughter who's joining the livestream from Italy right now, so she wanted to log in and watch. So for the past 22 years I've been a public servant. I actually started my career in local government working in the mailroom or the document processing center, as we called it back then, for the Colorado Department of Revenue. I didn't know it then, but what I thought was going to be a temporary phase in my journey became the first stop of a lifelong commitment to public service. Over the years, I've had the honor of working with so many tremendously dedicated and talented people who share the same passion I have for taking care of our communities. And all of those experiences have prepared me to take on such an important role here in Adams County. I love local government. And like many of the people in this room, I believe it is my calling to serve. Since I joined Adams County, the Adams County team last year, I've been so impressed by this entire organization. We have some of the most dedicated, inclusive, and hardworking employees in Colorado. I've been able to stand side by side with our staff during celebrations and storms, and I'm so hopeful for the future of our county with all of them on our team. I want to thank you, our Board of County Commissioners, for your diligence and commitment to finding your next county manager. I know it was a thoughtful and at times intense process. With more than 530,000 residents, our county is one of the fastest growing, most diverse counties in Colorado, covering almost 760,000 acres across northeastern Colorado. It is a county that has thriving urban corridors, deeply rooted rural communities, and everything in between. It is also a county facing many changes, and you recognize the importance of investing in your county leadership as you navigate the challenges along the way. I often think about how Adams County Government can meet this moment with so much change and opportunity, while building a future where everyone will thrive. As a board, you've laid out a clear vision for Adams County that requires all of us to be innovative, inclusive, and forward-thinking to meet the needs of our growing communities and provide the service they deserve. I am excited and humbled to take on the work of leading this organization to deliver on this vision which mirrors my own. This dedication to service and excellence is the very reason I wanted to be a part of this team and do this work. As your county manager, my charge is actually pretty simple, to center our service to this community in everything we do. What you can expect from me and my team is ethical leadership, transparency, strong fiscal stewardship, a willingness to be innovative and forward-thinking, collaboration and true partnership, accountability, and above all, love and care for every member of this community. My team and I are committed to serving the whole of Adams County, including every resident and unincorporated Adams County, and all of the residents living in the cities and towns of Aurora, Arvada, Bennett, Brighton, Commerce City, Federal Heights, Lockview, Northland, Thornton, and Westminster. In addition to carrying out your priorities, we also serve each of our elected offices whose missions are equally critical. To our county surveyor Brian Douglas, our sheriff's office led by Sheriff Gene Claps, our coroner's office led by Monica Barcuchia Jordan, our treasurer's office led by Alex Villagroan, our clerk and recorder's office led by Josh Sigelbaum, our assessor's office led by Ken Miso, and our district attorney's office led by Brian Mason, we stand ready to support you as well. And finally, I really have to acknowledge our leadership team here in Adams County, because I definitely don't do this work alone. Collectively, the leaders of your county departments have more than 100 years of experience. They are compassionate and capable experts in the business of local government, and they are the leaders you can call on to solve challenges and celebrate accomplishments together. Two weeks ago, I met with our team to outline my vision for the county, and I asked each of them to reset with me as I step into this role. Many of them were able to be here today to reaffirm that commitment, and I hope everyone in this room has an opportunity to meet and work with them as we step into this next phase. You may already know them, but I'm extremely proud to reintroduce my team to you. Our department directors, and if you're here, please, please stand up. We have Amir Fakir, Director of Facilities and Fleet Management, Brian Staley, Director of Public Works, Byron Fanning, Director of Parks, Open Space, and Cultural Arts, Jason Schultz, Director of Information Technology and Innovation, Jeff Kloska, Director of the Colorado Air and Spaceport, Jenny Hall, Director of Community and Economic Development, John Nelson, Director of People and Cultural Services, Katie McDougall, Director of Adams County Human Services, Mark Osborne, the interim Director of Budget and Finance, Matt Rivera, Director of Community Safety and Wellbeing, Nikki Kimbleton, Director of Communications, Stephanie Wild, the Director of our Riverdale Animal Shelter. And also in partnership with our leadership team, I have the pleasure of working with Dr. Kelly Widenbach, the Executive Director of Adams County Health Department, and Heidi Miller, our County Attorney. And finally, I really could not do the job for me without the leadership and support of your executive leadership team. We have Alicia Reese, our Senior Deputy County Manager, Kristen Sullivan, our Deputy County Manager, and Lindsay Melk, your Chief of Staff. I want to thank you again for the opportunity to serve Adams County. I am so fortunate to be here in this room with all of you, and I'm genuinely grateful every day that I get to serve you and do the work that I do. I look forward to taking off together. Thank you very much.
Congratulations and thank you so much Dion for those really wonderful remarks. You covered a lot, a lot of leadership, your experience, your family, did you want to introduce your family? They did get introduced at the meet and greet, I know, don't go anywhere! I see you Jamie, come back!
There's snake camp.
I know!
Yes, I have my wonderful husband of about three years, Jay Stroder, and his cousins who are visiting from East St. Louis today, Tyra and Daryl, and then my amazing mother, Yolanda, and my stepdad, Ward, who are here with us today. I think my son Xavier might be lost in the lobby somewhere, so he might be something by as well, but yes, I appreciate them being here.
Thank you so much Dion, thank you family so much for being here, I love families and your support. As we take on these large roles, your support of your family is your sounding board, they're your safe place, and so I really appreciate all of you being here, thank you so much. So with that, comments, remarks from the board. Commissioner Mulcahy.
Yeah, really, I just want to say thank you so much for applying. Thank you for willing to put yourself out there. It was a very intense process that we went through. Essentially, Kathy and I just joined the board here in January. The focus of the past six months has been to get to this moment today. And so it was a lot of work to make it happen. And frankly, we had some amazing candidates who threw their name into the hat. You were one of them and you were just, just amazing. You clearly rise to the top, and you know, I'm just really thankful that you decided to join us in this capacity, and thank you for applying. I really think with your leadership, we're going to be able to bring this county to a new level. So thank you so much for taking on this role, and I look forward to continuing the great work.
Thank you Commissioner. We'd like to take pictures with the family as well, so if we can get through our remarks and then we'll come down and take pictures with Dion and the family, and then Dion and the Commissioners. Commissioner Odoricio, Henson, then Pinter.
Yeah, I would echo some of the comments. I mean, I agree with the comments, but I won't echo them because you need to hear new stuff. But once you meet someone like Dion, you realize that, that you can't unmeet them, they're impressive, they inspire you, and it's one of those situations where you want to work with people like Dion. And Dion is one of those people that I'm excited for us to work with, to see her both, her systems thinking and her innovation, and her ability to work with folks internally, but I also ask the folks externally to really come together and get to know Dion, because she's gonna be amazing externally as well for us and represent the folks of Adams County. So it's an honor and privilege to be sitting up here for me for the next less than 600 days or 500 days, whatever it is. But I will tell you that it's, it's awesome and it's great to see us get leadership like Dion into the team, so thank you.
Okay, my turn. Welcome and congratulations Dion, we're so thrilled to have you at the helm of Adams County. Yes, the process I'm sure was not easy for you, for any of the applicants who were all, as Julie said, we have some very qualified candidates, but I really love, well Steve said "systems thinking," I mean, that was, so I'm glad he got to say it first, but when you talk about all of your experience in local government and to say that you really wanted to be in Adams County, I really felt that, that really resonated in, it resonates in your work every day and getting to know you more through the interview process, I really felt that. And for you to choose this county as where to put your heart and your expertise and your intelligence and all of that is very exciting, because I'm very excited about the future of Adams County and really looking forward to working with you together into the future to do the best that we can by everybody in the county, and congratulations again.
Just to echo, this really was a comprehensive process to select you. Dion comes to Adams County with so much experience, it's been highlighted by everyone, but it was a really competitive field. Earlier on the lobby, Chair Baca highlighted that we intentionally held posting the job until we had our new Commissioners, so that they have the opportunity to help us select a candidate for the future. And that's you, you're our candidate for the moment and for the future, and your decades of experience really are gonna be an asset to our community at this time. And I for one, am incredibly grateful for your skill, your experience, your diplomacy, how knowledgeable and hardworking you are, and that you're bringing that to our community at a time where we really need that steady hand. And that's what you bring, and I am just over the moon that you get to be our county manager moving forward, and it was so beautiful to have the unanimous decision that we are all enthusiastic about, and that's for you to be our county manager.
Thank you so much Commissioner, so congratulations Dion. It was a very, very competitive field of county managers. There was a lot of deliberation by the board and coalesced very quickly around your leadership. I don't have much more to say, I did write down a few things from your own speech, and I think the biggest thing for me, it's personal, it's my home. And I can't remember, I think it was Julie that said, you know, it's inviting someone to take care of your home and the people that are here. And that's what your leadership is about, and I appreciate that much, very, very much. And the moment that we're in is that we hired for the leader to rise to the moment. And I think that was a big thing in your leadership Dion. I also wrote down part of your speech is that this organization and the values that we have and share together are ethic. Ethics, transparency, fiscal responsibility, innovation, collaboration, accountability, and most importantly, love and care for our citizens, love and care for one another in how compassionately we approach this work. And I think the exclamation point in your remarks that I want to just repeat again is that Adams County can be a leader you can call on. And I really, really appreciate that, and I think that is a value that this Board of County Commissioners in the region, nationally, that we want to continue to lead local government, lead into the future of times of uncertainty, times of policy changes, times of leadership changes, and it's really to have that steady hand, as Commissioner Pinter had said. So congratulations, welcome, you're already here, but welcome again. It's, I'm ready for this next new, next step for all of us to take together. So with this, I'm gonna start with Dion and the family first for photos, and then we'll have the board jump in. So right now, here in the front, and then Nikki's here.
I will embarrass my son very quickly, he just joined us, Xavier.
Yes. Okay. Thank you all so much. Again, congratulations to Dion. We're at item number four in our agenda, awards and presentations. And we're proud to recognize, and I see all of you up there, thank you for being so patient, the National Parks and Recreation Month. So this is a time to celebrate the spaces and programs that help our communities thrive. From beautiful open spaces to family-friendly events and enriching cultural programs, our Parks, Open Space and Cultural Arts Team at Adams County brings so much heart and creativity to their work. They create places where we can gather, recharge, and connect, something we all need now more than ever. So thank you to the team for everything you do. And with that, I'm honored to introduce this proclamation celebrating National Parks and Recreation Month. So Commissioner Malika, if you'd like to read the proclamation?
Yes, I would love to. All right. Whereas Adams County is dedicated to responsibly serving the community with integrity and innovation, offering inclusiveness for all families and businesses. And whereas Adams County Parks, Open Space and Cultural Arts exist to significantly enhance quality of life, enrich, enrich our communities and inspire. And whereas Parks, Open Space and Cultural Arts is an integral part of communities throughout this county, including Adams County. And whereas Parks, Open Space and Cultural Arts promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people in our community, these spaces promote time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being. And whereas Parks, Open Space and Cultural Arts programming and installations are critical to the community's economic prosperity through increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks, Open Space and Cultural Arts is fundamental to the environment's well-being of our community and is essential, is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and nature recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Park and Recreation Month. And whereas Adams County recognizes the benefits derived from parks, open space, and cultural art resources, now therefore be it resolved, resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Adams County, State of Colorado, proclaims July 2025 as National Parks, Open Space and Cultural Arts Month. With special recognition and appreciation for the team behind the planning and managing and maintaining our county's park systems, open space, and cultural arts. We urge all residents to celebrate the achievements of this outstanding team and promote the importance of public recreation spaces and natural beauty of our communities and our nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. This time I'd like to invite Byron Fanning, the Director of Parks, Open Space and Cultural Arts, to the podium.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca, and thank you, Commissioner Malika, for reading the proclamation into the record today. As you've noted, Parks and Recreation Month is a little bit different here in Adams County. It's more about Parks, Open Space, and Cultural Arts, which are the areas that our department supports. And you can see the difference, and we are very proud of what we do in this department. First of all, our Parks and Open Space properties are incredible places for the community to recreate, rest, and be one with nature. There also are the amount of acreage that we preserve through our Open Space Grants Program and through farmland preservation over the years is impressive and really makes a difference in the community. You can see the difference that arts and culture is making in the community, both on our trails, at our public buildings, and much more to come as we continue to move forward. There are many parts of our department that are not in the name, including our ranger program, our 4H programs with CSU, golf, and our events, just to name a few. And speaking of events, with an event like Stars and Stripes coming up this Thursday, it's a great opportunity for our staff to come together. Everyone on our team will be there working hard to really make a nice impact and create a great celebration with our community. Finally, on behalf of everyone on my team, and we have some of them here today, please stand. The rest of them are setting up for Stars and Stripes as we speak. We'd like to thank you for your continued support for our department, for our programs, for our events, and for everything we do. So thank you very much.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Byron. Now I'd like to turn the floor over to any of the commissioners, if you'd like to offer a comment.
Steve had his hand up first.
Steve, and then Commissioner Henson, Commissioner Pinter.
Yes. I think this is important because a lot of times people don't recognize that when we look at the overall holistic wellness of a community, it's, it's opportunities to, to get out into nature, opportunities for recreation, and opportunities to learn about the past, whether it's history or it's art, and experiencing each other. And so I think this is one of those areas, when you talk about Parks, Open Space, and Arts, I think a lot of folks will look at it and then realize that when it's not there, you notice it. And when it's there, you sometimes maybe don't, you appreciate it without knowing it. And it's very important for our overall wellness. And I think that this is something that we will continue to prioritize in Adams County is that it's not just about roads and bridges and sidewalks, which I love sidewalks, but it's also about the spirit of our community and the identity of our community. And these are ways in which we celebrate and recognize that. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Yes. So thank you so much, Byron, to your whole department for everything that you do. It's been a real pleasure. It is a pleasure getting to know people across your department. And I'll dovetail on what Commissioner Odoricio said. You know, we talk a lot about public safety, and a lot of times we're talking about sidewalks and roads and potholes and, and things like that. And flooding, which I know your team is all very well familiar with, with all the infrastructure improvements happening out there, which we're very proud to be doing for the betterment of the community. But investing in your departments and the arts and culture and open space and trails is so impactful, and it's a real commitment to talk, lets the community know we care about the whole person and everything that, and we want to support everything that our county has to offer. So I'm very excited about Stars and Stripes. It will be my first time, and so I'm really looking forward to that this week. I thank you for all the work your department does for all of our summer events and look forward to getting to know everybody better and experiencing all of the open space areas as I get to know the county even better in my service as a commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pinter?
Thank you. I had called Deb's at the pre-meeting to say that I wanted to talk more about Stars and Stripes because I'm so excited. I love a good fireworks show. I know that we're probably transitioning to drone shows at some point, and we're piloting that. We're still fireworks this year though, right? Because we've been getting the good rain. Okay, that's great. So if you're in the audience and you've never been, like Commissioner Henson, it starts at about four o'clock. There's all kinds of fun cornhole, and there's a beautiful playground in the area, as well as the whole park to explore. And also has many food trucks. How many food trucks do we have this year? Fifty-five zero?
One five.
One five. That makes a lot more sense. Fifteen is one, one five. I can do it. Fifteen is still a lot. Something for everybody, funnel cake as well. And then the music this year looked really, really good. There's some previews on YouTube if anyone's looking. It starts at 7:00 PM, followed by the fireworks show. I know that my family's super excited. I've got some friends who have become, yeah, yeah. If you look it up on YouTube, it's great. Good job, Commissioner Henson. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna. So this is such a beautiful compliment to our cities who do most of their celebrations on the actual Fourth. This gives us a nice opportunity to have a good community gathering. It's usually about fifteen to twenty thousand people. I was out there yesterday, saw them setting up the porta-potties. It's going to be a great time with funnel cake and corn dogs and music and community and friends. So thank you so much. I know it's a multi-day effort for an evening of entertainment, and thank you all for all that work. And look forward to the rest of the calendar that the Parks team has put together because it's quite extensive. So thank you for this and look forward to celebrating our Independence Day this week. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. So we'd like to invite the cultural, open space, Parks, Open Space and Cultural Arts Department down for a photo. And while you make your way down to... Come on down. While you make your way down, I would just like to thank, these are the folks behind the scenes that maintain all of our parks, they do the design, oversee construction. For me and my family, you know, they pick up the trash, they keep the restrooms clean, which makes for a pleasant experience for all of us. But really, at the heart of all of this is really the citizens of Adams County and their support of the open space sales tax. So that is a funding mechanism that the residents have approved. It's a shareback model that we share back with our cities through, and then we also do a competitive grant process. So I can tell already, you're all too spread out, but we're going to come down anyway. So thank you so much to all the Parks Department. We're going to come down and join you. All right. Thank you all so much. We're at item number five, which is public comment. Jamie, do we have anyone signed up for public comment today?
We do, but it looks like they're all for the land use cases.
Okay, we'll get to the land use here in just a moment. Any citizen communication? Anyone in the room wants to talk under public comment that did not sign up? Okay, not seeing anybody. Elected official communication, anything from the board? I just want to, it was mentioned earlier, Stars and Stripes. So please, to the public, to our staff members, please come and join us at the Rivendell Regional Park. It is a great time to celebrate. It is a long weekend, this coming weekend, July 4th does fall on a Friday. So talking with, our entire director team was here earlier for Dion to congratulate her. I did have a chance to talk with Stephanie Wild, who's our director, over the animal shelter. And what she shared with me is that this is a busy season for the animal shelter. In, what month are we in? We're July 1st. So in June, the number of animal intakes for Adams County at our animal shelter was nine hundred. They took in nine hundred animals. So this is a time where we get together as families and neighbors and friends, and we have block parties, and we have picnics, and we have gatherings to make sure that you lock up your pet and keep your pet safe. And then also, many pets are afraid of fireworks, and they have a tendency to escape your property. So with nine hundred animals, we anticipate that that will go up through the month of July as we enter into the summer months. Please keep your families and your pets safe. We're here to help. We're here to shelter your animals. If you have a lost animal, please visit our animal shelter. But let's take some precautionary measures and take care of our little pets running and going into the weekend. Anything else for elected official communication? All right. So then we're onto the consent calendar. Just need a motion to approve. I'll make a motion when it pops up on the screen. There we go. I move to approve the consent agenda as is. And the consent calendar passes five to zero. So under new business, I don't see anything under county manager?
No items for new business today.
Okay, thank you so much. We covered the county attorney a little bit earlier. Does staff need a moment to set up for the land use hearing cases? Yes? Okay. So let's give you about six minutes, and we'll reconvene at 10:15. Yes? Okay. So, let's give you about six minutes and we'll reconvene at ten fifteen. Okay, the time is ten sixteen. I'd like to reconvene the meeting to hear our land use hearing cases. So, staff, if you're ready?
Good morning, Commissioners. Can everyone hear me okay? Perfect. Alright, good morning. My name is Brian Marin. I'm planning with the Community and Economic Development Department. This morning, I will be presenting case PRC 2024-6, the Vega Solar Energy Facility located at the southwest corner of East 112th Avenue and Hank's Crescent Road. The requests in front of you this morning are three conditional use permits, one for a large-scale solar energy facility, one for a utility substation, and one for a battery energy storage system. The subject property is in eastern Adams County, about sixteen miles north of the town of Byers. And the areas surrounding the subject properties is agricultural and nature, and there are currently no major developments around the vicinity of this project proposal. The current zoning of the subject properties and those surrounding the subject site are zone agricultural A3. And the future land use of the subject properties is agricultural large scale. The Adams County Comprehensive Plan ambitions this category as the most appropriate to function as large lot agricultural land and may have corporate agricultural operations on the property as long as they are formally entitled. Now, as we can see from the site photos, the areas surrounding the subject property is currently vacant, and the land is used primarily for agricultural purposes. Before I move on to the request of this application, I would like to provide a quick summary of the subject properties to better understand the proposed entitlements in front of you this morning. The combined area of the three properties is approximately nine hundred and eighty-one acres. Previously, there were oil and gas wells on the properties. However, those wells have now been plugged and abandoned. In 2010, Excel Energy requested an areas and activities of state interest permit, known as a 1041 permit via case PLN 2010-5. This case was heard by the commissioner, by the Board of County Commissioners and approved by the Board of County Commissioners in May 2010. And the permit allow Excel Energy to install a three hundred and forty-five kilovolt transmission line to run along the southern and eastern portions of the subject site to properly connect substations throughout the area. That transmission line can be seen running along the southern and eastern portion of the subject site in red. Now, in considering the merits of the conditional use permits in front of you this morning, the commission needs to consider the following criteria of approval. That the permits are permitted in the zone district and consistent with all performance standards, that the proposal is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area, and that all offsite impacts have been addressed, that the site is suitable for the use, there is a convenient and functional layout, and there's adequate services to support the use. Now, if approved, the project is scheduled to begin construction in the second quarter of 2027, and it will take approximately two years to complete according to the project narrative provided by the applicant. Operations on the site are to begin around May 2029. As mentioned previously, the project will encompass three separate properties working in tandem for this, for this project. All solar panels will be located along the western portion of the properties, and the panels will be mounted on a single-axis tracking system so that the panels can move along with the time of day to maximize energy production. The height of these structures will vary between eight to ten feet, depending on the site's topography, and there will be alleyways between the panels to provide proper maintenance. Additionally, the solar panels will be set back from old cap and abandoned oil wells. And currently, there, the final quantity of the solar panels is unknown, but that will be determined at the time of the formal build impairment. So, once the energy is generated, it will be routed to the battery storage station, which will be part of the overall site, and will allow the site to store excess energy and release it once it seem appropriate. This battery systems will be designed to withstand potential fires, and all enclosures will have heat and ventilation and air conditioning cooling the batteries to maintain energy efficiency. The systems will be on staff, but will have remote access to perform periodic inspections. At the appropriate time, that stored energy will be routed to the substation and switch chart, which will be connected to the major transmission lines to properly route the energy into the overall electrical grid. Now, due to the site of the subject site and equipment, the property will have a perimeter fencing of eight feet in height. And the fencing will be in accordance with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Fencing Best Practices, meaning that all posts will be round cap to protect wildlife that lives in the area. Furthermore, the applicant has provided two major wildlife corridors along the southern and northern portion of the subject site, each with a width of two hundred and fifty feet in order to avoid animal habitat fragmentation. Furthermore, the site will not be illuminated except for certain areas throughout the site, and all light will be constructed to beam down to avoid unnecessary light pollution in the area. And this will help minimize wildlife attraction to the site and limit the impacts of migration and other activities of the wildlife. Lastly, the applicant has also carved ten acres from the subject site for future oil and gas exploration on the northwest corner of the site. Here are just some elevations, the proposed equipment that will be installed on the site. Now, in addition, in addition to requiring a comprehensive site plan, our development standards also mandate that the project, projects of this nature submit a formal decommissioning plan. Given the proposed lifespan of the project is estimated to be between thirty to fifty years, the decommissioning plan requires Vega or any future successor to submit a formal plan to the county prior to cease and operations. This plant must outline the removal and proper recycling of all equipment from the site, as well as the regrading and reseating of the land until the site is stabilized and restored to its original condition. Now, as part of the entitlement process, a public notice and a request for comments was sent to twelve residents and property owners within a one-mile radius of the site. This expanded notification area was necessary due to the large parcel sizes on, around the area where most, most properties are ten acres or more. Staff received one public comment in opposition to the project citing concerns about potential obstruction of mineral rights and the future ability to explore or develop those minerals. However, the applicant has worked with, with the resident to create an agreement in order for, to avoid that potential opposition. None of the referral agencies had any comments in opposition to the applicant's request. Therefore, given the current conditions of the site, as well as the proposed site plan for the project, staff has been able to determine that the proposal complies to some district standards and is consistent with the purposes of the development code. There are adequate public facilities and infrastructure to support the proposed development. The proposed, the proposal is compatible and harmonious with the surrounding area, and all offsites have been properly addressed. Additionally, this case was heard by the Planning Commission on June 12, 2025. During that hearing, the applicant addressed questions regarding the proposed operations on the site, potential accessory uses to the land, as well as project funding. No members of the public were present to provide comments on the application. The applicant also requested a revision to condition A of the conditional use permit proposing to extend the validity period from thirty years, as recommended by the county, to forty-five years. The commission did vote five to two in favor of that amendment, and subsequently, the commission voted seven zero to recommend approval of the conditional use permits. Therefore, staff recommends approval of case PRC 2024-6 with twenty-four findings of fact, four conditions, and one note. And I just want to go over the conditions real quick. First of all, the conditional use permits shall expire on July 1st, 2025, so this time, staff still recommended thirty years. Condition number two is a little bit different than what you have on your staff packet, Commissioners. We changed the language just to better address the concerns for the decommissioning plan. So, therefore, now the condition reads, the operator and any successor or assigned shall comply with the decommissioning and site restoration plan, which is the exhibit eight of the submittal and exhibit 3.3 of the staff report, including the posting and maintenance of a performance bond in favor of Adams County that covers a hundred percent of the estimated cost of the operator decommissioning and restoration obligation. Then, condition number three, the applicant shall construct a site in accordance with the approved site and landscape plan, as illustrated in exhibit 3.2. And lastly, the applicant shall comply with all their requirements specified by the Colorado Division of Natural Resources, Parks and Wildlife, provided in their letter dated February 26, 2024, including the creation of two wildlife corridors being at least two hundred and fifty feet across in their site development plan, and including a perimeter fence eight feet in height and have round cap posts to ensure wildlife protection. Here are the findings of fact for all three requests. And the note to the applicant. And with that, I complete my presentation, but I am available for questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. So, I'm gonna go over the land use process. We start with the staff presentation, and then it comes to the board for questions for staff. There'll be an opportunity for the applicant to also do a presentation, and then questions from the board for the applicant. Those that are here for public comment will have an opportunity to speak after questions from the board to the applicant. There's only one opportunity for the public to speak during the land use process. So, even if you don't have you are also welcome to ask questions, and then one of the county commissioners, if they so desire, can pick up your question and ask and deliberate it at a future point in the meeting, but you only do, you have one opportunity to speak for three minutes. I will let you know it's about two and a half minutes, that you'll have thirty seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. The applicant will respond if requested. It will come back to the board for discussion and then a motion from the board. So, thank you for your presentation. And at this time, any questions from the board for staff? Commissioner Malika, let me get out of my, the screen. Malika, and then Commissioner Henson?
Okay. Quick question. So, I'm a little confused here on something. So, when you talk about the planning committee and the recommendation to move this from a thirty-year to a forty-five year, they approve that at the planning commission level? Right?
Yes, Commissioner.
And then so, but under what we're voting for today, under that conditions of approval, it's still thirty years. So, I'm just confused about that piece.
That is, that is correct, Commissioner. Staff still recommend in thirty years, because, that's because it's it's what we currently support for this potential uses. However, if you if the Commissioners believe that, based on the information that the applicant has provided, that you guys wanna extend that that timeline from thirty to forty-five years, staff wouldn't have any, any opposition to that.
Okay, great. So, I guess my question was really, what the planning commission approved is still, you know, it is what they approved, but it's up to us to have that discussion about whether to extend it from the thirty to the forty-five.
Correct, Commissioner.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Henson?
Thank you. Can you go back to slide nine, please, and kind of talk me through what we're seeing here? I just wanna make sure I understand what, or, or eight or any, so, okay, so because I really had a hard time reading these slides. What is the yellow line with the red dots? That's, that's the eight-foot fence?
Yes, Commissioner. The yellow line is the property lines for all three properties.
Okay, and then, and that's, and that is going to have an eight-foot perimeter fence? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay, and that's to keep wildlife and everything out?
Correct.
And then the green lines between one and two and two and three, those are the wildlife corridors?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay. And you said up in the, in the upper right-hand corner, that's the yellow square there, that's for future?
Oil and gas exploration.
Meaning they would do, they're gonna frac there?
I'm not sure. The applicant is here to answer that question, Commissioner.
But, but is that your understanding as to what they, when they say, I mean, what else would, well, they can, I guess they can answer that, what else it would be if it's not gonna be fracking? When they say future, are they talking about after the life of this, this solar farm or simultaneously?
They have not stated at what point there will start oil and gas operations, Commissioner.
Okay. And then and there is power, Excel has built a power line out to this, so that when they've got their storage here in section two, no, go back, sorry, go back to the other side, please. Yeah, that, so that in section two, that's their storage?
Correct.
Okay, and so, and that's, and then where is this? And then and then Excel is gonna just move the power where they need it?
Correct.
Okay. What? Is there going to be any thing happening underneath the solar panels? Anything, any vegetation? What's gonna be under, underneath there?
At this time, I don't believe that there's any plan for any accessory uses for this particular project, Commissioner. It will depend underneath of the what the applicant sees as beneficial for the site.
Okay. And then I have a question about the decommissioning. I saw that, I appreciate that the language was, was changed a little bit from what was in our packet, but when it says estimated cost, so, does that mean if they sell the property or and in that bill of sale, there's an estimated cost for decommission, what happens if that estimate is inaccurate? Does that mean that the bond covers a hundred percent of the actual cost of what it is, or they're only gonna be required to cover what's the estimated cost? And what if that estimate is insufficient?
I, I would say that staff is not an expert in estimating the cost of decommissionings. We would rely on the applicant's estimate for that bond amount.
And what if the bond is not sufficient to cover the actual cost? Who pays the, who pays the balance?
It's, it's gonna be incumbent on the county to accept a performance bond that does cover the estimated costs, and we'll have, again, we'll have to look at the terms of the specific bond. But again, that's in part, I think why staff is recommending thirty years and not forty-five years. Things change over time and costs increase, so we're gonna wanna make Um things change over time and costs increase, so we're gonna wanna make sure. That that performance bond that's in place covers the then current cost estimated costs to decommission the facility. So we're gonna have to look ahead, so you know, again, if it's a thirty year, forty five year approval, that we're covering. The costs with some sort of a, you know, an escalator factor. So we'll have to look at that at the time the performance bond is presented to the county for acceptance.
Meaning that might that you so obviously, it's easier to model out thirty years as opposed to forty five years for. To in hopes of being more accurate in the cost.
Correct.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And I apologize, I didn't introduce myself, Sally Daggett from the county attorney's office for the record, sorry.
Thank you, Sally, appreciate it, and those are my questions for right now.
Great, thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Sally. Any other commissioners? Have questions, I do have a question for staff, we saw a solar project come through about a month to a month and a half ago, um. What did we? Was that also a conditional use permit and then what timeframe did we use? Did we use thirty years for that?
Yes, and I also didn't introduce myself, so I apologize, Gen Reter Planning and Development Manager. Uh yes, it was also a conditional use permit, um very, very similar request in a very similar area, and we did recommend thirty years. And the commission approved the thirty year expiration.
Okay, great, thank you for that, and then um. The discussion of performance, the performance bond after decommissioning also came up during that hearing, so. What is our the current language that we're asking for, so it's very different if we accept today. Just for simplicity, if we accept today. Um an estimated cost in thirty years, or can it be written that it's? At the time of decommissioning, the bond, like how how is that monitored? I'm looking at Sally, thank you.
Again, I think the condition of approvals probably um. Broad enough to cover the fact that the county and the applicant is here and the audience is listening to this conversation. That we're gonna want that estimated cost to have some sort of an escalator provision in it. Um so and I guess we could tweak the condition of approval even more. To say estimated cost of the decommissioning obligation, you know. At the time of decommissioning and including an escalator clause to cover that con- contingency. Um that that might make it just that much stronger, but I think the county is not gonna accept a performance guarantee that doesn't. You know, cover the full cost and and another point too to be made is if the um. Site is decommissioned and the cost of the performance and the operator um you know. Is short on the amount of the or doesn't perform under the performance bond for the decommissioning and sort of there's this. You know, maybe only part of the facility has been decommissioned, that that would be on the property owner to continue. Any is to make up any sort of shortfall in the decommissioning amount, that's not gonna be. Obviously, the county is gonna have to, you know, get involved as far as, you know, forcing the then owner. To uh complete the obligation, but that would be on the property owner, not on the county itself. But doesn't mean that the county won't be involved in some fashion.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, Sally. Any questions, additional questions for staff?
Excuse me, Commissioner, if I may add, I just wanna point one additional point out, so the condition of approval specifically does uh require the compliance with the decommissioning and site restoration plan. And so then if we look in the exhibit uh section four point one of that decommissioning plan, it does speak to the requirement that that uh performance bond would be provided prior to construction starting. And then that there would be a requirement to reevaluate every two years to ensure, and specifically, it says to uh. Uh be reevaluated uh at the conclusion of construction every two years thereafter from the date of substantial compliance to ensure sufficient funds for the decommissioning and restoration if deemed appropriate. So there is there is language in the decommissioning plan to require that uh. Look back every two years to make sure the proper the appropriate amount is is uh is available should there be a need to pull the bond.
Okay, thank you, Chase, I really appreciate that, okay, I don't think we have any further questions, um at this time, I'd like to invite the applicant up. For your presentation, uh if you can state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dale Harris, my address is four two five Fry Street, Denton, Texas. I wanted to start off by thanking the planning staff for working with us throughout this process, they've been extremely responsive. And very, very great people to work with, I also wanna thank the board for taking the time to review our project. Now I will begin oh with a uh little introduction on Infinity. Uh I am here as a representative of Vega Solar Energy Facility for Infinity Global. Infinity is an energy solutions company that develops projects across the United States and the globe. Uh we are a US-based company with over twenty gigawatts in different stages of development. Plan for construction over five hundred megawatts this year, we have four hundred megawatts of operational assets. And our headquarters is in Miami, Florida with uh offices in Dallas. This is just a little uh. Pictures of our operational assets. And then here is a map view of where those operational assets are. The planning staff did a great job in uh describing the project, but I'll just quickly go over that as well. Uh it's approximately nine hundred and eighty acres, that's gonna be sixteen miles northeast of Byers. Uh we are located on a property with two transmission lines, a three uh three hundred forty five K V. And two hundred and thirty K V transmission line. There are no residential neighbors within the proximity of the project. Uh we are at the corner of a hundred and twelfth Avenue and uh Hank's Crossing. As mentioned by the staff, uh we are requesting for a forty five year conditional use permit. And the reason for that request is our uh C O D date, the date in which we're gonna be in operation is twenty twenty nine as of right now. Based off current technology, these sites are engineered to last for forty years. So thus that gives us approximately forty four years from now. Um which is why we are requesting for a forty five year conditional use permit. This project is gonna be estimated to cost two hundred and fifty million dollars. Uh which could potentially bring in over twenty million dollars in tax revenue to the county. We expect for there to be two hundred and fifty people during the peak of construction. And anywhere from two to five people, two to five uh people long term uh on the site. It is a hundred and twenty megawatts A C, hundred and fifty six megawatts D C and a sixty megawatt size battery. So as you can see here, there are gonna be two transmission lines running through the property. And we are actually gonna be fencing in the three different sections, there will not be a fence that goes around the entire perimeter. That allows for us to uh have the uh migration corridors going through the site. Uh these are based off the recommendations of of C P W uh and the two years of environmental surveys that we have performed. As you can see, this is a little photo of uh what some of this standard utility scale batteries look like. Uh they are uh non-occupiable uh containers. This is a safety measure uh that has been incorporated into the uh N F P A eight fifty five standards. Which we engineer all of our sites to meet. Uh safety is a huge concern of ours and we wanna make sure that our sites are designed in uh the highest standards possible. How do I go back there? Shoot, previous. We will be submitting an emergency response plan and like I said earlier, engineering the site to meet the highest standards of safety. That is making sure that the technology that we're using has gone through rigorous testing. They do runaway uh testing, thermal runaway testing uh on the individual cells. And if those cells propagate to the modules, uh then they fail fail the test. Uh we're also going to make sure that we have a SCADA system in place to monitor the the system remotely. As well as have onsite personnel uh trained to to fix any sort of minor issue before it becomes a major issue. These are just some of the benefits, uh we will create quite a few jobs uh during construction as well as some long term jobs. We try to hire locally as much as possible. Uh there's gonna be a substantial economic benefit from this project. And this will contribute to sustainability and producing energy in a uh renewable way. Uh some of the project key highlights, uh we filed for interconnection in April of twenty twenty four. Uh we're expecting to receive our system impact study back in October of twenty twenty six. Uh we have no uh onsite um wetlands. We coordinated with the US Army Corps of Engineers and they provided us a approved uh jurisdictional determination. That all of it is considered dry land. The isn't, there are no major environmental concerns and we are committed to continuing to coordinate with C P W. And incorporate their recommendations. The minerals on the site, uh which, by the way, I wanna clarify, we are not in the oil and gas business at all. Uh and have no intentions of personally fracking anything on the site. But to um accommodate the mineral interest owners, we needed to provide a pad site. We we initially had a ten acre pad site, uh which is still the plan during development, but actually post-construction. We will be allowing for a twenty acre pad site to accommodate all mineral interest owners. We do not wanna prevent them from accessing the minerals. And uh the plan for construction is gonna be uh twenty twenty nine. And then I think there was a few questions on the decommissioning plan uh that I I wanted to address, uh we are happy to use a third party consultant. Uh to calculate what that decommissioning uh cost is gonna be. That performance bond will be recalculated every two years, there is definitely fluctuations in the cost. We've actually seen in in recent years it decreasing uh due to the uh recycling industry. Really coming a long way. But as inflation uh continues, there might be an increase in cost, which is why we are committed to recalculating that bond uh every two years. And then I think that addresses uh all the questions, but happy to answer any additional questions.
Great, thank you so much for your presentation, so at this time, uh questions from the board for the applicant. Commissioner Henson?
Thank you, so when you're talking about the pad site for mineral development, so is it possible that while the sol- your solar field is there? That they could access the if there's oil and gas below, those can be accessed simultaneously?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And that is our intention, anytime we develop a site that there is uh mineral activity, we provide a dedicated pad site to the mineral interest owners.
Okay. It's you've had conversations with them, do you have, are they are, I don't know if they are here, may maybe they're going to speak, so I don't know, I'm just kinda curious what their. Plans are so we kinda have a full understanding of what all could be happening at this site.
They, sorry, would you like for me to answer that question?
Sure, yes, if you can.
They they are not here, there are two major mineral interest owners, one is going to be our landowner uh that we already have a surface use agreement in place with. And then there is another major mineral interest owner uh which is called the mineral uh the Miller account. Uh they are the one person that submitted a letter contesting the project, so. We decided to delay our hearings to negotiate with them a surface use agreement. And which is where we have now decided we'd expand the pad site to twenty acres post-construction.
You mean, once everything's set, then you can then. When the construction machinery is gone, then you that means that you can allow them up to twenty acres?
Yes, yes, currently, right next to the pad site is where our lay down site is, that's gonna be utilized during construction, but it won't be necessary to be utilized post-construction.
Gotcha.
Thus, we'll expand that.
Great, thank you, and how many jobs once, oh so can you talk about how many jobs during construction and then after the construction phase is over?
During peak construction, we're expecting around two hundred and fifty people and then.
And for how long is that?
Uh so peak construction can go anywhere from three to six months, uh so on average throughout the site, you're you're throughout the construction period, you're looking at about a hundred, a hundred and fifty people.
And then post-construction?
Two to five.
Yeah, okay, for just for for maintenance?
Yes.
And just ongoing observation, okay, great.
And I for maintenance purposes, if if we are uh capable of adding sheep grazing. Uh we would be happy to, that is i- ideal for us.
Okay.
However, I do not know if this environment is going to um be suitable for sheep grazing.
Because?
I just don't know, uh there's not a lot of of uh uh animal grazing going on out of the site.
Okay.
And if they can't, you know, if if there is no sheep in that area that that can that can be grazed, then we might not be able to utilize it.
Okay, but it's something you're amenable to.
Oh, absolutely, it just depends on vegetation growth.
Okay, well, that's good to know, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're doing digital hands or hand?
We are gonna, yes, let's go ahead and do that, cuz it's been electronically recorded. Um you got a a smile and a laugh out of the board because we saw a solar project about six weeks ago and. Very long conversation about sheep and goats and grazing and wires and lots of things, so at this time, Commissioner Pinter, um then Commissioner Odoricio.
Thank you, um I really appreciate the thoughtful questions of my colleagues and thank you for your presentation, the way you thoughtfully prepared it. I think a lot of landowners are completely surprised about how the way surface land rights and mil- mineral rights and water rights have all been split apart. In the state of Colorado, and so uh the ability of a mineral owner to move forward with or without your consent. Um and like how that all works, and that is a separate application process. Um with the staff that has its own separate monitoring, permitting, et cetera. I just wanted to say I appreciate that you are providing um a pathway moving forward. Uh because it's come up again, uh when we circle back to staff feedback, I'd be really curious to hear how staff are would manage that. At that moment and what the application review process would look like. Um and I just wanna say thank you for thoughtfully acknowledging in your presentation the way all those interests and ownerships in the state of Colorado are divided out.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Odoricio?
Thank you, um first of all, uh on the decommissioning plan, I think um I like the fact that it says it's every two years, I'm looking at four point one. Uh and this might be a question for our attorney, um but also uh who would be the uh successor if uh Vega Solar Energy Facility LLC? Were to like go under, um my question then for the attorney would be. To make sure somebody's on the hook for this restoration and the updates over time. Uh what would we need to do to make sure, it says or transferee, I understand that, but uh we need to find out like. If there's no transferee and all of a sudden the company goes down, uh I don't see here that it says or transferee or the property owner. So I guess I I'm gonna start with my attorney first.
Well, the way mostly is performance bonds are done is it's, you know, it's gonna be the, I guess, the operator. That would be posting the performance bond, and then if they are no longer the operator. Since they've had to, in order to um. Post that performance bond with the county, they've had to put some sort of collateral aside, and so. If there's gonna be a new operator that um the the current operator would want to switch. The who is, you know, posting the performance guarantee, and that's what hap- if there's gonna be a change in operators, I assume there's gonna be a change in who's. Posting the performance guarantee, the county doesn't, you know, care so much who that is as long as it's the current operator, but it's. In the, you know, if somebody is leaving a project, it's in their interest to get out from under the performance uh bond obligation, so. Um it's gonna be whoever, you know, holds that performance, uh is posted that performance bond with the county that would be responsible, but I that may change over time, so. Defer to the applicant if he has a different view of the situation.
This is back to you, back to the attorney, it that doesn't address my question, actually, I'm so sorry. Uh let me put it in another, if the company uh goes bankrupt and they throw their hands up in the air and they walk away. And there is no other current operator, okay? Without saying, you know, without assuming, like where does the buck stop? Like, yes, we might theoretically be able to look at that collateral, assuming it's not also taken through some sort of bankruptcy proceedings, and then we get into the bankruptcy. What I'm trying to figure out is um thirty years is a long time. These LLCs are created on a per project basis for a reason for limited liability. So if things go bad, they get to seriously bankrupt and walk away. I'm trying to figure out, so if that situation were to occur, where and how, other than the uh. The bond after it was initially up or the last updated, how do we ensure that we get the most up to date? Amount that could be used to uh remove and decommission and restore?
Would you mind if I just say one one thing here?
Sure, you can save our attorney on this question.
Well, I wanna confirm with the attorney, but uh you know, the 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 reason the bond is held by the county is that if Vega Solar Facility LLC. Well, I want to confirm with the attorney, but you know, the, the, the reason the bond is held by the county is that if Vega Solar Facility LLC. Was to go bankrupt, that is not going to be part of the, the collateral for Vega Solar that is held by the county. And the money, you know, to decommission the project.
Theoretically, it's a higher priority, right? And that it would be protected and that there'd be within the bond agreement or bond conditions that it would. Triggering, triggering conditions would probably trigger some sort of protection for us in the bond, correct?
If the, you know, site is, you know, no longer used and needs to be decommissioned. Then the county's first going to look to the performance bond for that financial obligation. And I guess your question is if, what if that amount isn't sufficient? Then who do we, who would the county go after? I mean, then it becomes a matter of, you know. Seeking, you know, injunctive relief from the current operator to fulfill their obligation. It could be seeking, since these land use approvals around with land, maybe it's seeking who's the then-current property owner to fulfill. The terms and conditions of the county's land use approval, but those would be the likely parties. And I hope I addressed your question, which seems to be about, you know, is the, what, what happens if the amount of collateral? The performance bond isn't sufficient to cover.
Yeah, there's two parts. The company goes away or the and/or the collateral is not sufficient. And you said maybe it could be the landowner, but is that something that we would then actually? I don't think the landowner would agree to that. And I doubt that we would be able to place a lien on the landowner to, to cover that. So how would that work?
Let me try and, I think I know where you're, where you're headed here. I mean, the, the purpose of the performance bond is to cover the expenses associated with decommissioning.
Correct.
Now, it's possible that we get those numbers wrong, right? That's possible with anything we do where there's a performance bond. But it is a guarantee for the county and we get to go after the performance bondholder, right? We, we get to go after someone different because they're guaranteeing that money. Anything could happen, right? Also possible, a bondholder goes bankrupt or something to that effect. But that is why we have performance bonds, is that that is someone else we get to go after for the costs associated with decommissioning. So if something happened that this operator and the landowner. Don't want anything to do with it anymore and the county's stuck with it. I mean, it's still not our land. But we could at least call on the performance bond to try and get that equipment removed. But it is possible that it won't be enough. And ultimately, that's going to be whoever owns the land is stuck with it. And they're going to have to figure out what they need to do if they ever want to sell that property.
Right, so theoretically, they would, would still be stuck with stuff in the ground. That could not be removed in restoration. I guess my question is, what's our, do we have a process for monitoring? Number one, the, every two years, somebody's going to look at this and update it. And number two, the legal aspect of knowing that who's getting the notification if a company were to go bankrupt. Or if there's an issue. Like I see two departments here. I got a planning and a legal, but. Like, we have not always had the best processes to even identify. Expired special and conditional use permits. I'm worried about something a little bit more technical on this. So what's our, how do we handle this between the two departments?
I'll, I'll let Chase, I can tell you that the county attorney's office admittedly does not have a process for this and we have not been involved in the past. We would generally get notified by a department if there's a problem and then risk management would assist with going after the bond. So we would, we would help with the legal processes, but we do not have an internal monitoring system in the county attorney's office.
Right.
So I would have to agree with you that this is an area that we have seen as being kind of a shortage. So as you may recall, I believe it was about last year, we actually requested additional FTE, so we hired, and she's not here today. But Grace Fleming is our Development, Research and Compliance Coordinator. And one of her specific roles is actually to monitor and do a better job of monitoring and tracking requirements of conditional use permits and other, other permit types. So her role specifically would be to, for things like this, to make sure that if there is a, this is a unique situation where we have a, a bond amount changing over time. Typically, that's not, not usual. But in this case, that specific position would be responsible for maintaining and going back and making sure that the. Updated amounts are updated every two years.
Sounds good. Off, I mean, off topic, I would love for us to do a study session on, on that. Because it has become such a huge problem for the last twenty years of us being able to address things like that. And it's nothing against you guys. You guys are actually, actually fixing the issue. But I, I'm going to, in my short time here, to be pushing really hard for system. Modifications and improvements that if that person were to walk away, what's the system that's in place for that position to be able to continue? We have, also, I thought we were working towards some more triggers from the legal department. We need to address that as well. And we get to do that in that same study session. I think that's fair. Back to you. So you would be, I love the fact that you openly and proactively had a, said you'd be willing to use a third-party. Validator to, to look at this. I appreciate that. And I think that would also include, want to make sure that the language that our attorneys could look at is to make sure that includes. That every two years or upon our request, at least every two years, that we would do that. Does that sound good?
Yes, sir. And I'm sure if you also want to do it in-house, we would be happy to commit to that as well.
Right.
You know, in Wyoming, they have the industrial siding division that actually sets that bond amount for us.
I appreciate that. So if we can have our attorneys look at that, section four of the decommissioning and restoration funding plan. And ask if there's a modification that makes sure that the cost of the third-party consultant, if we so choose to ask for such, is on the operator. The second part would be the agrivoltaic question that was asked. And I know we're talking about goats and sheeps. I hope that we will, as a board, possibly require that there be an agrivoltaic review. Of these types of cases in the future. You, I will also say thank you for proactively saying if it works, it works and we'd be happy to do it. Thank you. I would also ask, but the unknown that you mentioned is that you don't know about whether the soils and the conditions. Would be there for successful agrivoltaic. And again, I wonder if we could also, you'd be willing to apply a third-party consultant to review that. As a condition to say that we agree that we'll have a third-party consultant review the options for agrivoltaic.
Yeah, at, right now, I have been kind of advised by our environmental consultants that it is going to be unlikely for us to. Do sheep grazing because of the lack of vegetation that, that is out there. But if that, if that changes, and I'm happy to consult with them again and get a letter to be able to.
I would be happy with maybe, if you're willing to have that letter sent to the county. And then they could see if it's, no proactive, reactive, retroactively, I can't really add that as a requirement, but in the future, I hope we can. And maybe you can help establish that precedent in a way that makes sense and is reasonable both for you as well as for the county. So I'm putting that on the table without a specific solution yet.
Absolutely. And if you don't mind, I'd like to go back to addressing the, the decommissioning.
Thank you.
And talk about how construction of these sites work now and how decommissioning cost has gone down. Due to our current development practice. We, we do not use very much concrete at all on these sites. Our objective is to do the least amount of grading as possible and we are just hammering steel piles into the ground. And trying not to affect the vegetation. So that when we re-vegetate the site, it's the least amount of re-vegetation possible. We also want to prevent dust. And so the majority of the material on the site is going to be steel. We joke with the landowners about, you know, in our agreements in places that don't have decommissioning bonds, we have in our agreements with the landowner. That we will decommission the site and return it back to its original condition. I joke with them about if we did not follow through, that it is their lucky day because there is millions of dollars worth of steel. That is going to be on the site. And recycling these has now become a profitable industry in, in some, some projects.
That's an interesting take on it. Thank you. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. I do have a question for you. Can, was it just? I gather two property owners that have mineral rights. What is the total number of property owners on the nine hundred acres?
There's one property owner on the, the nine hundred acres. Well, it's, it's one company that owns it, but it's, I think, three brothers.
Okay.
In total. But there's quite a few different mineral interest owners. We have the majority of the mineral interest owners. Agreements in place with the majority of mineral interest owners.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I do want to thank you for including. A safety plan. It was just flashed on the screen very quickly. I don't recall previous applicants including that. So thank you for doing that. And then also the decommissioning, I think we've talked about that to great extent. We're feeling a little sunburned in Adams County. Unfortunately, the oil and gas industry with the abandoned wells. I understand all the wells on your site are plugged and taken care of. Is really a challenge and we can't forecast in thirty years the health of a company, what changes in technology have occurred. We are the top one or two, depending on the day, in Adams County that lead the state in abandoned wells. We're the second highest producer and what really occurs is that these companies. Declare bankruptcy and then they go away and they just leave the site as is. And so that is a concern of ours, which is why you're seeing so many questions about decommissioning and what that process would look like. So I don't have any additional questions from the app, for the applicant. Okay, thank you so much. And at this time, if you want to take a seat, go ahead. Did you have something?
I would love to say one last thing because I continue to hear the thirty-year approval. I want to just plead my case one more time on the forty-year, forty-five-year conditional use permit. We, we've seen this in other counties and we have set the precedent in other counties, getting the approval for forty-five years. The reason that, that a lot of counties, what we've seen have started or have been approving thirty years. Is because of the technology at the time, these sites were only engineered to last for thirty years. Also, the interconnection process used to be quicker, so they'd be able to connect to the grid quicker. And because it's a precedent, a lot of other developers don't want to come in and try to ruffle any feathers and request for something further. They just want to kick the can down the road. I'm happy to provide the evidence that the, this technology is now engineered to last for forty years. Based off of the design and the technology. So we would really appreciate a forty-five-year approval. That would be great.
Okay, thank you for that. I do, let me, okay, thank you for that. And I can ask a question of the attorney here in a second. Okay, if you'd like to take a seat, we will thank you for your presentation and answering our questions. So the next item on our agenda is to hear from the public.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so Jamie, who do we have from the public that wants to talk about this hearing?
For this land use case, there's nobody signed up.
There's nobody signed up. Is there anyone in the room that would talk, wants to publicly comment about this land use case? No, not seeing any. Okay, so. It's now to the commissioner discussion regarding the Vega land use case. Any discussion from the board? Commissioner Pinter. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mulca, then Commissioner Pinter.
Quick question, I guess, back to staff, just to clarify. When I looked back in the notes, the previous solar project that we had back in, what was that, like April or something like that? They didn't ask for a forty-five-year, they were fine with the thirty-year approval. But one of the things I was curious about is what, can you explain to me, what does this process look like if, you know, thirty years from now? None of us will be here, but maybe some of us will. But thirty years from now, what will it look like for this company to come forth? To get that additional extension of fifteen years if they wanted to make it to the forty-five-year mark? Like what, just define to me what that looks like.
Sure, so we actually don't have renewals of permits. They would have to come in and apply for a new permit and under the regulations at that time. So whatever best practices and standards we have in thirty years, which I'm assuming will hopefully keep up with the technology. Then they would have to comply with that, that process, whatever it looks like at that time, which may or may not be a conditional use permit.
Okay, so that's a good question. So if we approve this today with thirty years and say in the future, we choose to change. Our process to allow renewals, would that, would this project be able to renew at that point? Or is it because it's, was approved under this criteria that no renewals ever in the future would ever be considered, even if we change?
We would evaluate their new application as a new request, so.
As a new request, okay, because of what we're structured to approve today?
Yes.
Okay, that's helpful to understand. That was my question. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pinter?
Yes, I have a similar question and I see we have some of our oil and gas staff here. If you could talk about how we handle in the oil and gas applications. And what Colorado law allows us to do and the rigorous process that that would have to go through and that that would be a sep- its own separate land use process.
Absolutely, yes. That's, that would be an entirely separate application. I would ask Greg Dean to come up to, you know, the table or the podium and. Maybe answer a little bit further about what that, what the process would look like for the new application.
Yeah, hi, Greg Dean, the oil and gas administrator for the county. So all oil and gas facilities have to go through an OGF, or oil and gas facility permit process. Regardless of what surface use agreement Vega has with the landowner, that in no way guarantees that the spot they have denoted on the plat. Is where an oil and gas facility would be deemed to be most protective of public health, safety, welfare, the environment or wildlife. They would have to come in and do an alternative sighting analysis with us so they could show their desired location as it is on their plat. But they also have to show us two alternatives and we would have to review that for access. So are there roads to connect that facility? Is there a river or stream running near that facility that would be deemed environmentally sensitive? We would have to review all of that. We could apply additional best management practices, limitations on their operations, limitations on the number of wells. Given there are no homes there, probably wouldn't require a residential waiver of any kind, but there are streams and rivers in the area. So we'd have to review it from that perspective as well. So the location they have denoted as a twenty-acre plat site. In no way guarantees that that's where an oil and gas facility would be permissible by the county because of a myriad of reasons. From our regulations, which are completely separate from this conditional use permit. Obviously, if all their locations are equally protective of public health and safety, we would have no problem permitting a site. Well, the board would have no problem, problem permitting a site. That was, has a surface use agreement associated with it, but if we see, if we think another site. A mile away is more protective, further away from a river, then that would be the site we would. Want permitted regardless of whether they have a surface use agreement there or not. We don't take surface use agreements into consideration for oil and gas facilities. That's just, our, our, our goal is public health, safety, welfare and the environment, not. Ease of access for the landowner, unfortunately. We, if, if all things being equal and that is also a benefit, then great, but it, it's not our prime directive.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Yes, thank you. That's my question.
Okay, Commissioner Mulca?
Don't run away, I need you. Okay, so then, so we need, okay, when they go to. Look at permitting for this oil and gas site, they need to provide two other alternative sites. Got that. So I guess my question actually is then directed to staff is. The site plan that we're approving today obviously would need to be modified. Is that something that's okay in this process? Or with what we're approving today, this is the site plan that we're approving today, that the oil and gas well goes at this particular site? How much flexibility is there in this process? For the, for the applicant, right? Can they move this, can they change this site plan once we approve it today?
No, so the, what we're approving today is the site plan.
Okay.
If, if there are minor changes, tweaks, we can do that through a minor amendment, which is administrative. It would not. There are certain criteria for minor amendments, essentially not, not changing the, what the board approved. If it's just moving, you know, a fence, just, you know, a little bit. That's something we can do administratively. If it's something more substantial, then it would need to go back through Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, all right, that's good to know. Thank you so much. I appreciate you being here.
Okay. Any, yes, Commissioner Henson?
Thank you. So. The Planning Commission. Did approve or was agreeable to a forty-five-year. Permit. And staffers, can you talk a little bit more about why staff is recommending thirty?
Sure, so the process is staff provides a recommendation and also Planning Commission provides a recommendation. So there, there are two recommendations here, very similar, but the only difference being the expiration date. Staff is recommending thirty years because it's something that we're comfortable with. It's something that we've allowed for many, many other solar energy providers. For, for projects very similar to this, including the one several months ago that you heard. It's just something, you know, as Sally had mentioned earlier, you know, a lot of things can change in thirty years. And so that, that's where we feel comfortable. It, it does seem that technology is changing, so solar providers are asking now. For additional time, for, for additional expiration. So I mean, if that's something that the board is comfortable with. Planning Commission was comfortable with the forty-five-year expiration. So it's really just something, there, there are two different paths here. Uh, and so there, you have an option.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, I mean, but there's no material or substantive benefit to one or the other? Is, 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 is the staff's position?
Again, I, I would just say that the thirty year timeline is something we've granted to others in the past. I, I don't know that any of us can predict what's going to happen in, in thirty years or forty-five years, so I think it's really kind of this is what we're comfortable with. Uh, I don't, I don't know if I can say that it's, it's good or bad, or, or if there one is better than the other, but just more of a comfort level and, and kind of how we've processed permits historically.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Jen. Um, I have Commissioner Odoricio and then Commissioner Mulca.
I will just say that, um, while I appreciate, uh, the, the effort by the applicant to extend from thirty to forty-five. Um, uh, you know, it, obviously, any business is going to want that extended as long as possible. Both for their own operations and for the possibility to sell it, um, to someone else, like institutional investors or others. I, I totally understand that. In this case, just like, uh, we were unwilling to move on the, um, lo- landfill recently, I do think that for the sake of, um, some of the unknowns and to see things play out and because of some of our concerns, I feel more comfortable to leave it at the thirty. And that will be my vote, is that I would not want to extend it to the forty-five.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Mulca?
Um, yeah, actually, thank you for your comments, Steve. Um, you know, I, I am personally, um, supportive of the forty-five. I think it's, um, I, I think it makes sense with the technology of the project, but open to discussion from my other commissioners as you guys dive in, so, um, let it, let's, let's talk it out.
I really appreciate the deliberation of the board. Um, I'm also comfortable with thirty years. I feel like that staff has demonstrated that there is a path forward. Um, if the applicant would want to come back at a future date, uh, apply for a permit for the additional fifteen years, I think that that's a reasonable path forward. Um, if that's not an action we need to take today and build it in as an amendment, I would like to just leave it at thirty years.
I, I guess my, my concern would be making this change to forty-five here today without really he- I think it's something that we need to, that we, we need to address to make sure that we are staying current and being efficient and reasonable w- w- while also protecting the public interests and sa- and safety and all of that. So I'm not really comfortable going, exceeding staff's recommendation today without, but I think it's something that if this is what we're going to see, we need to start, we need to get caught up. If this is what people are asking for, there's a reason for it and we need to have some deliberation about it in a study, in an appro- in, in the appropriate setting, um, which is, I don't believe this dais right now. So, uh, for that reason, I would also go with the thirty years. However, I would like also, I mean, I also am, I'm aware of you know, not wanting to make somebody completely reapply. It's not a brand new project. If they come back and ask for that extension, it's not a brand new project. So if there's something we can do about that process, they shouldn't be starting at zero if they have an existing functioning solar field. Um, and they just want to keep using existing infrastructure that they've built and are maintaining and utilizing to make them do a whole new permit process. Uh, so I, I, if that's kind of the kind of amendment you're talking about or, or something that we can do to lea- to kind of alleviate that, um, both on the side of the applicant and staff from having to go through an entirely new permit process for something that is maybe functioning well, I think that's another conversation we need to have. But I will be supporting the thirty years today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I really appreciate the context that you provided there. And I agree on, what I heard is that it would be a new permit under the regulations at the time they would come back to apply for a new permit, um, for the additional fifteen years. So yes, if we can look at streamlining that, but I don't want to put, um, my concern still is, and I, my concern still is, is that we are here also for the um, public safety, health, and welfare. And decisions in Adams County, um, historically, whether we go back thirty years, we go back sixty years, ninety years, a hundred and twenty years, um, that decisions we make today affect future leaders, they also affect business, um, most importantly, that they affect our residents. And so to add an additional fifteen years, um, is a real concern of mine because we saw how quickly, um, different industries have changed. I think the positive thing here in, I anticipate this applicant, I will, our terms are not for thirty years. Um, I will not be here as a commissioner, is that Adams County is growing. And we've known this, we've known this for thirty years. Um, we are seeing the growth, uh, and we're on a growth path for at least the next ten to twenty years, absolutely. Um, Excel Energy, we understand that there are challenges of, um, energy support. Uh, as the state of Colorado changes, technology changes, data centers become a thing. Um, you know, throughout the states, the absolute, um, what we see is you know, warehousing, we have all the state's interstate system here in Adams County, so we're primed for logistics. Um, we're the backbone for the state of Colorado, not to only move commuters, but also to move commerce. Um, so I only see that the energy demand will be go- going up here in Adams County. So with that, um, if you want to pull up the slide for approval, the recommendation, unless there's other comments from the board. Any other comments from the board? Okay.
I'm happy to move to approve, um, let me get the, the phraseology correct here. Um, P R C twenty twenty-four dash six with twenty-four findings of fact, four conditions, and one note. Just with a reassurance from our attorneys, that is the thirty year version that I just read out.
Yes.
Edition number one.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you then. My motion stands. Move to a press.
Alright, and I'll second.
I have a question real quick. Sorry, I know you guys. Uh, does that include also, uh, with the expectation that they modify that the plan, uh, confirms that the cost of uh, third-party review for the decommissioning and the bond amount will, uh, be done after the fact?
I, I think to make it really clear, um, it probably makes sense to have a, a separate condition of approval and I have some language drafted, um, I don't know how to get it up on the screen, I guess.
You could read it into the record perhaps?
Yeah, if you could read into the record, I could accept it as an amendment to my motion. I think that would solve the problem.
Okay, so this will be condition of approval number five. The operator and any successors or assigns shall reimburse the county for its cost to hire a third-party consultant to review the estimated cost of the decommissioning and site restoration obligation at least every two years, but no less than each time that the then-current operator calculates the estimated cost of the decommissioning and site restoration obligation for purposes of maintaining the performance bond in favor of the county.
Perfect.
Thank you. I would accept that amendment of the, it's condition, it's condition number five, uh, to my original motion.
Thank you.
Can all vote? And the motion passes five to zero. Thank you so much for being here to the applicant and thank you to staff. So we have one more land use hearing, um, if we can take just about a five-minute break for staff to set up and then we will reconvene, um, right before eleven thirty.
Okay, the time is eleven thirty. I'm gonna reconvene the meeting. Uh, we have one more land use hearing case, and that is for the Hurley Riding Academy. So I'm gonna turn it over to staff.
Okay. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Uh, good morning commissioners. My name is David uh Duboski, and I'm here to present to you the Hurley Riding Academy RCU two thousand twenty-three dash sixty-eight. Uh, and this um, this request located at four one four five eight three Cherry Street. And the request at hand is a conditional use permit to allow for an accessory horse riding academy use. On site, there already is an existing single-family home and an accessory agritourism use. And the site is approximately four point three acres. Uh, this request taking place in the northwest portion of the county, as you can see in that red uh box in the in the top. Uh, and then a little closer, we can see that it is a long Cherry Street. Uh, surrounded by Thornton and E four seventy. Uh, and it is near the intersection of Colorado Boulevard and East one forty-fourth Avenue. And then you can see closer what this site looks like and the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, as you can see, it is a um rural agricultural um residential area. The current zoning for this site and many around it is Agriculture Two. Uh, and there are also Agriculture One and Agriculture Three uh nearby. Future land use of this site is residential low um uniformly as the rest of the neighborhood. Uh, so a little background on the property that we are talking about. So like like stated before, there is a single-family home. And there is a permitted buy right accessory agritourism use. Um, and this is, this use um is uh the applicant's um uh business, and it is the Giggling Life Care Farm. Uh, and I, and in a few words of what it is, and I can let the applicants speak uh more to it, it is a farm animal-based youth experiential education and skills-building organization. Offering camps and various kinds of education programs like four H uh and after-school programs. Uh, and onsite, as part of the permitted accessory agritourism use, they um have chickens, ducks, lambs, goats, steers, and and miniature donkeys as part of the Giggling Life Care Farm. So all these animals are allowed uh per uh the agritourism use and the zoning. Uh, and to, and for here, the request tonight uh today is just to allow two horses to be integrated into the farm and used for the uh if for Horse Riding Academy. The rest of the animals are not uh being uh, they're not part of this request. It's just for the two horses. Um, overall, the site will have four, but the two other ones will be a personal and there won't be um any more than two horses being used as part of the farm. Um, so uh, and then two overall just for for personal. So um, and so our code uh recognizes that a uh riding stable or academy may also be an accessory use in the operation of a club, association, ranch, or similar establishment. And staff um has recognized that to uh allow this to be in conjunction with the agritourism agretainment use that is accompanied on uh the site. So we believe this is uh um an allowable accessory uh additional use. And so the criteria for approval in requesting a conditional use permit are one that the request is permitted in the zone district, must be consistent, and must comply with the development standards. Uh, it must be harmonious and compatible to the area and not detrimental to the health and safety. It must address all outside impacts. The site must be suitable for the use. It must be a convenient and functional layout of the site plan. There must be adequate services. So the site plan, as it exists, um is what shows. Uh, and so there are many structures here already built uh for the farm uh and their own house. And as you can see in the green, the is the Horse Riding Academy area. That's where the horses uh will be um walking around. Uh, there are sixteen parking spaces. Um, and so that will accommodate any special events that may happen and or employee parking. Um, but the majority of the, of the cars that come that come and go are just to drop off the kids. Um, and so then you can see in the red box, they have a drop-off and pickup lane on their property. Um, and and just to remind, at the proposal is just about two horses. Um, the rest of the animals are already allowed uh on onsite. Uh, sixteen parking spaces, and the rest of the buildings um either are uh permitted agriculturally exempt or are not large enough to meet the size minimums. So the neighborhood um with this request uh is as uh shown, it is rural residential, uh very agricultural. If you look to the north and the south, you can see that the road uh is a dirt uh road. Um, and then you can see to the east across the street, you can see that is an open uh field for for farming if so chosen uh is so chosen. Uh, then you can see the west, you can see the the front of a home. Um, and then you can see um through the left, there are two photographs of nearby neighbors on that on that road that show they have a livestock, lots of livestock. So there, these are two different neighbors. Uh, there's horses on the left, uh sorry, on the top. And then um other uh steers, I believe, um up to the bottom. So there are allowed um all these a- animals um just like the Hurleys are. Um, and then to the right, you can see the uh image of the drop-off pickup lane. And then the parking lot that is existing, the applicants will be adding um a parking lot in the back to accommodate the rest of that sixteen, uh but it is not built yet. So as a part of the farm operations, the applicants uh perform a rigorous um site operations plan, uh and that includes um two times daily cleaning of the areas and and all the pens. Uh, they weekly dispose of uh of the animal waste. Uh, they have three separate management techniques for for the flies that might arise. Um, and then the trash is dumped weekly alongside the animal waste. Um. And so the post-request does comply with the performance standards and development standards. It is harmonious and compatible. As you can see, there are other animals in the neighborhood. This is in a, the, all the animals are allowed to be on on the site. They have addressed all the site impacts when it comes to the site operation plans. Uh, site is suitable for the use. There's a convenient and functional layout of the site plan as the structures are are uh spaced out there. Are uh, and then there are adequate services to support the use. Um, when it comes to the horses, because um as part of the farm, they um, the horses will be integrated in 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 such a way in which kids will walk around with the horses. And for those kids, there will be uh porta-potties uh and hand washing stations that will be um for um other campers only. Uh, so. So uh, within one mile, uh, we sent a hundred and seventy-two notifications to property owners and occupants. And we received forty-four comments. However, today and yesterday, I I I have received eight additional, so we can add that onto there. Uh, and I actually have them all uh printed out here. And all of these are um added to the comments of support. And they all um talk about uh personal uh stories about how this camp created memorable therapeutic and joyful experience for their children or the children themselves wrote notes. Um, they talked about how this um Horse Riding Academy taught them valuable life skills of how to interact with with animals and care for the horses. Uh, and they overall talked about how this is such a uh great community asset. And of the forty-four comments that were, well, fifty-two, there were four public comments of opposition. They cited issues of parking, traffic, animal welfare, um and then also uh there was a property value uh comment. Um, no referral agencies were concerned. June twelfth, this case went up to the uh Appointing Commission, and there were a few mon- few uh discussion points um that staff wanted to address um after the fact. Uh, there was, there was a question of the number of horses being part of this uh request and the potential for it for additional. Uh, staff um calculated that the applicants are up to their capacity of animals. Uh, even if they were a farm or not, they're up to their capacity based on the zone and size. So they cannot add more horses re- um at the moment. Uh, moreover, we have included a condition as a result of this uh hearing uh in which the applicants would be um tied to two horses for the use of the of the riding academy. Um, then there were talks about uh uh traffic and dust levels. Um, and again, um in in response to the dust levels, we have added an additional uh condition to um require the applicant um adhere to more uh dust management best practices in addition to what they are already were were doing for the rest of their uh farm animals. Uh, and then there were issues of, uh, there were topics of of uh traffic in which uh staff was not concerned about uh based on on the traffic report and site uh visit. Um, and then there was an uh to- topic of horse riding after a business hours. However, it was noted that that horse riding was personal. It was the applicant's daughter. Uh, so um but then we all, but then we uh we also talked about if the applicants were to do an event for the farm post uh in the evening or 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 post uh business hours, they would have to adhere to Adams County Health Department uh minimum standards uh for events, uh and we created a new condition for that. Um, also at the Appointing Commission, uh, there were fifteen uh public comments. Uh, eleven were in support, um citing the same reasons uh in the notes. Uh, three were opposed, and one was uh neutral. And and like stated stated uh before, uh, they had these following concerns. However, staff has addressed um has ha- has addressed these two conditions and worked with the applicant on these uh additional things that came up. Uh, so the PC recommended um six oh in approval of of the requests. At the time, these additional conditions were not uh created, so at the time it was eight. However, there will be twelve. And so staff um recognizes that this request is harmonious and compatible, not detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare. They have addressed all the site impacts. The site is suitable for the use, and there's a convenient and functional layout, and there are adequate services. So staff is going to recommend approval of the conditional use permit RCU two thousand twenty-three dash sixty-eight with with eight findings of fact, twelve conditions of approval, and one note. Here are the recommended findings of fact, recommended conditions and notes. And then here are the additional four uh conditions that uh staff added uh as a result of the planning commission conversation and public comment. Um, thank you. I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you so much. Um, so I'll go over the land use process one more time. It's staff presentation. Next, we'll have questions from the board for staff. Uh, the applicant will have an opportunity to come up and make a presentation. Um, then we'll come back to the board for questions, and then we'll go to public comment. So public comment is three minutes um per person. There's only one opportunity for the public to come and speak uh to this matter. So even if you have a question, you're welcome to ask um ask it at the podium. And then if a commissioner desires, they can pick it up and ask it further in the deliberation process. The applicant will also have a an opportunity to respond if requested. The item will come back to the board for discussion, and then we'll have a motion. So at this time, are there questions from the board for the for staff? Commissioner Molika.
Yes, I have a quick question for, a couple of questions for staff. So um, my first one necessarily doesn't have to go specifically to um this case in front of us, but just understanding kind of the background of this property and its use. Um, so, and I will disclose, I have attended a party at Google Lake Farms. It's a school party. Yeah, it's a big thing right now. It's awesome. Um, anyway, quick question about the, it's currently zoned as A two. It's being used for commercial uses. Is there a reason why we don't require it to be zoned as a commercial property? Or, because it, just kind of curious how that works.
Sure, so um there are certain uses associated with agricultural businesses that are permitted, um including uh agritourism and agretainment that that are um more focused on agricultural uses and the farm and education of the public um that the applicant has been has been doing. Um, there's also the associated use of uh the the riding academy, which is before you today, which is kind of a step up. That's a little bit more um potentially impactful to to the surrounding area. So that was, that was not included in the agretainment agritourism um bucket. Um, so there is a conditional use permit required for that use.
Okay, that's helpful, just understanding it. My actual uh additional questions are for the applicant, so I'll ask those later.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Any other members, questions for staff? Okay. Then we'll ask the applicant to come up and make a presentation, and you can state your name and address for the record.
All right, I'm Christie Hurley. And I'm sorry, my address, is that correct? All right, one four five eight three Cherry Street, right in Colorado, eight zero six zero two.
All right. I'm John Hurley. I'm her husband.
All right, um, I just wanna say thank you, guys. Is that good? Is that too loud? It's crazy. All right, good. Um, thank you, guys, for um being here today, and thank you for everybody for working so hard on everything here for us. I know this has been a very long process of almost a couple of years, so I appreciate the uh your time and thanks to everybody else for being here today. So I'm just gonna go off, I, you know, I would love to write a speech and and do that, but I just can't do that. So um, I'm just gonna speak to you guys a little bit about from my heart, my experience with horses, and where this program was, you know, originated from and how this all came about. Um, I was lucky enough to grow up with horses. I was born and raised in Wyoming. Um, and I was lucky enough to grow up with horses, um which was such a life-changing thing for me. Um, and my dad is an old cowboy, grew up with two parents who had terrible um childhoods, terrible upbringings. But the beautiful thing about them and the beautiful lesson that they can, they continue to teach me and everybody else is that you have a choice to make. You can be a victim all your life, or you can choose to make a difference, and you can choose what your life is gonna look like. And when they met and three months later married, they chose to change their lives and change their children's lives. And they chose to treat everybody differently than they've ever been treated. And I'm so grateful because we were very, very lucky to have parents that made that choice and gave us this great life. Um, and with that being said, um, they did their absolute best, and they were amazing. However, the emotional portion of that, there was an amazing household full of love, but there was nowhere to put your emotions. It was a very um cowboy mentality, um very um put your emotions, sweep everything under the rug. And um so any tragedy or anything that struck our home as children or anything else, you just worked through it. You didn't talk about it. It was just one and done. You got through it, right? Um, with that being said, um, thank goodness I had horses, because I knew at an early age that uh they were gonna be my best friends, and they truly were. They um, they saved my life uh many, many times. Um, as we ended up having kind of a life with more tragedy than I would like, but it's it shaped me and built me into a different person, has been able to teach me a lot of things to share with the community and with children. But um, early on, around fourteen is when I would say my first tough battle hit. And uh, you know, I knew that that the horses were a li- a life changer, a game changer for me because I realized something really important. Um, my, my best friend, my cousin, at fourteen years old, we were walking into a store together. He ended up, you know, we were playing, he ended up getting shocked and killed. I was not, right? So it was like one of those life lessons. It's like, why did someone get chosen and I did not, right? It was one of those things where um after the funeral, you never talk about those things again, right? Just he's there one minute, he's not there the next, and you're not allowed to talk about it. You sweep those things under the rug, and you just go about your daily duties, and you just get life done, right? You don't, you don't complain. You just, you just get up and you do your chores and stuff. So those horses that I could tell my deepest, darkest secrets to and that I could trust to confide in and ask questions about life, um, they were there to support me through that journey. And then, you know, later in my teenage years, just a few years later, we had a lot more tragedies of gosh, several in a row of suicide and, oh gosh, so much loss just coming to my house. Um, friends had passed away on a car accident getting off at my exit, just so many tragedies right after the next. Um, and um, yet again, no one to talk to because that wasn't really allowed, and psychology wasn't really a thing, you know, therapies were, it was not an option at all. Um, definitely. Um, so with that being said, turning back outside to those horses, they once again saved my life, you know? So I decided to go to college to get a degree in psychology and um and just, you know, my parents didn't quite understand that. But I I decided to do that, and so I could help kids to, that did not have an out- that did not have an outlet, to be able to try and find an outlet to get their emotions out, whether they had parents which mine were loving and like nothing about my parents, they did their very best. So that they would have an outlet to be able to, you know, share with somebody. So I went and did that. I ended up going in and getting my master's in education as well. And then I got married and had children and very blessed to be able to stay home with the kids and just do more volunteer work in the community at that point. And then in two thousand and six, Mother's Day, my cousin, another great cousin of mine, passed away unknown. On Father's Day, my little brother, who was twenty-one years younger, the light of our lives, fell into the doctor's wrong hands and got addicted to something and ended up committing suicide. So with that being said, like, that was a bomb that blew up that, you know, my, we have four children, the three boys. He was their football coach and their baseball coach and, you know, trying to, you know, teach your children. Well, actually, I never did even tell him that he committed suicide, so until ten years later, but just, just trying to figure out like where that comes from, you know, and get through those things was crazy. So luckily, my boys had a good friend with my my older brother that came back from, I ran to attend his funeral. And at that point, he, you know, valued to take care of these kids. And he was later killed by a sniper, you know, three months later. And, you know, at that point, there was no guarantees in life. And trying to teach your twelve-year-old son, a nine-year-old and a four-year-old that there is, there is a way, you know, that there, you know, you can get through life and that, you know, just that, just have faith. Where do you get that from, you know? So that is when we made a choice to move to Colorado and you know, and that was a beautiful point for me. As hard as it was, it was terrifying. Thank you so much, wherever that came from. Thank you so much. That was a really hard time, but I would have to say that that was a time that really shaped who I was because that was my period of growth. And that's when I knew my, my, you know, my time here on earth was to help others to get through things. Because yet again, I turned to the pasture, I turned to my horses and I watched my kids do it this time too, because they were so broken. And they didn't know, you know, they're teenage boys or pre-teenage boys, they just didn't know. But they also saw that life was so fragile. And with a lot of people continuing to be lost in our lives, the horses were the one constant. So you didn't have to trust them, you didn't have to talk, you you didn't have to ask for anything back. They were always there and they always knew how to support you. And you didn't have to say anything, you didn't have to ride them. So this is not about a riding academy necessarily. This is about being able to put your hands on a horse, sniff that horse and let those horses do what they do best because they are magicians. And they are the best healers known in all therapy, you know? And they kept me alive at that point and they kept my kids alive. And that was beautiful and that was great and that was a great time for us to watch and see. And so at that point, I knew in twenty sixteen, I started, well, our house caught on fire and burned down, so there's that. And then, so yet again, we are up and, you know, whatever. So then I was without my horses and I was like, gosh darn it, like, you know, they had to go to my parents' ranch. And it was an hour and a half away, but just having that hour and a half away, just not having them right outside your doorstep is a big difference, you know? So when we rebuilt the house and we brought the horses back, it was just such a different feeling. And I started a blog about about these things, about just gratitude and having gratitude and for the animals and all the things that they give and just having a second thing and you're not a victim, you know, you have choices and and all these things and we do have purposes. You just have to make the choice to see all the beauty and all the struggle. And and then we had, you know, two more tragedies in in twenty eighteen. My son in the Navy's best friend passed away and he was his official escort to Arlington, you know, to watch him bury his best friend and do that. And then three months later, our nephew, my nephew that lived with us off and on, left our house to go see a military recruiter and got killed on a motorcycle, you know, in Brighton. And so yet again, you guys, just one more thing. It was just like, here we are. You know, how do you pick up these pieces and where do we go? And yet again, those horses were out there in that pasture. And we had six kids living with us at the time. My niece moved in and another kid was living with us at the time. And every kid was out there and every kid, every day was out there. And the chickens was, you know, with the with the donkeys. And that was their space of healing. And I knew that I could not no longer keep that space for my kids. And that I needed to open it up to help heal others that had been through things like we had been. And so at, in twenty eighteen is when I decided after that last tragedy when I wanted to start opening it up and helping heal other kids in the community and giving back and letting other kids that did not have the opportunity to be around these animals to put their hands on these animals and be able to see what they can do as well because everybody needs it. Where our world is going with social media and everybody being indoors, the screens, the bullying, the suicide, it is real and I helped so many kids through it just by helping them heal through horses, you know? I went back and got my assisted, my equine assisted coaching certificates. And I am not, you know, it has nothing, I facilitate. I do nothing other than facilitate. These horses are magical, you know? They are, they are the ones that choose the kids and they are the ones that choose to help these kids. And you literally just touch them and they can do that. They choose the kids every day, you know? And so this is, this was designed just to help the community give these kids. So they don't have to trust you, they don't have to trust me, they don't have to trust some random therapist in a clinical psychology room, which I was trained for. It is so hard to trust somebody that you don't know. But when you can look into some of the eyes that have those big brown eyes and they are there for you and you don't have to worry about them trusting you back or whatever it is, then it is a magical space for these kids. And I've seen so much growth and so much leadership and so much amazing things come out of these these kids and these horses. So today for this is just all about using the two two horses that we have on our property. I see them every day. I see these kids. We aren't adding any animals. We're not taking away animals. We're not doing any of those things. It's just to continue to let the magic where it lies. When we put the horses out there and we still run our programs for kids on agriculture and teaching them where our food comes from and where our meat comes from, what are chickens for? Yeah, chicken nuggets is a hard conversations, right? The steers that we're sending to Adams County next month, as hard as it is. I cry more than the kids, but there is a purpose. There's a life cycle here and we're trying to keep that alive and well and teach these kids that it is really hard work to take care of these animals. And together we can do it and the teamwork and the just the community that we create with these kids and the leadership is unbelievable. But when you put the horses out of the pasture, it's not the same. It's just not the same, you know? So I I I just can't tell you how much the horses, you know, mean to us in our in our programs. It's it's detrimental to their programs for sure. So, and so that's, that's all I have to say for us on ours, but yeah.
I just got a few things to chime in from the planning commission meeting. Couple of things that came up, traffic. Someone presented some numbers, you know, on daily trips. Back in two thousand and twenty-one, there was fifty-eight daily trips on the street. And then in two thousand and twenty-three, there was a hundred and forty-six daily trips on the street. Back then, there was no development around us. We were dirt road to dirt road to dirt road. Now, we've been somewhat absorbed by the city of Thornton and we're this little pocket that's left. The biggest amount of vehicles that go down our street, Amazon, FedEx, UPS, Amazon, Amazon. I work from home. I sit through a window and I watch them race up and down the street and I'm constantly battling those guys and their speed. The amount of traffic, when we worked with Adams County, we worked with their engineering department. We actually hired a licensed traffic engineer who who came out and did a traffic study. And in that traffic study, which was presented to Adams County staff, they found that there was not an issue with traffic. It wasn't from what we do at our place. There were some other things that were brought up also about property values. On a weekly basis, I get phone calls and emails begging us to sell our property because we are in an R one, R two zone, I'm not, I'm sorry, A one and A two zone. We are a farming community that's left. Everything else has been annexed into the city of Thornton. It's mass density. And our property values, based on all these, these different studies and surveys, I've researched it. Our property values have gone up tenfold because we are a horse community. Our subdivision was originally created, I talked to Adams County about the dirt road and working with mag chloride and dust control. They said, well, we would love to pave it, but when they did the original subdivision, that dirt road has to remain a dirt road because that subdivision was put in for the use of horses and that horses could go down that road. We're currently, we had some concerns about dust. We're currently right now in the process of having a fabricator build a trailer with a water tank on it and sprayers to do dust management, dust management practices. I've worked with David and their staff to, you know, to take these and incorporate them in so that dust isn't an issue. We take a lot of pride in what we do. We don't want to be a bad neighbor. We are an asset to the community. I see this on a daily basis. When I see these kids come and the impact that this lady has. With that being said, I have two quick stories. One, there was a boy that came to the property. He was approximately eight years old. Very autistic, showed up screaming. I'm gonna call him Dee because I'm not gonna use his name. Wonderful kid. I don't want to be here screaming. I don't, I hate animals. I don't want to touch him. His parents drug him onto the property. Watched a horse walk up to him and look at him. He kind of took a step back and he looked at it. And all of a sudden, I saw lights go on in this young man. Six weeks later, I was out fixing a gate and I heard this. Mister John, I'm a knight in shining armor. And I turn around and look and here comes Christie with lead rope. Dee's on the horse, riding horse around the pasture. In six weeks, that transpired to a kid that showed up that was drug on the property. And they said, he looked at me, says, my parents are gonna be here in a minute. We're gonna hide behind the barn. When they get here, let me know. So excited. I saw the parents pull in. I walked over to the gate. They got out of the car. I go, your son's got something to show you. And I said, okay, come on out. And he came out and he was on that horse. And I watched two parents completely break down in tears. They said that what transpired in six weeks with the horses and her, they had never gotten that far, eight years of traditional therapy. Incredible story. He's now in high school. I saw him this week. He still comes to the farm. He loves seeing animals. He loves the horses. He's always out with the horses, petting the horses. Just changed that young man's life. One last story. There was a young lady that showed up that was in the foster care system. I don't know what happened to her, but she had sadness on her face. She had black hair, black eye makeup, black lipstick, black trench coat, black shirt, black pants, black army boots. Showed up with the worst abs. I was like, oh God, she's got her hands full. And I watched this young lady come on and the first thing that happened was Roper and Rascal came up and put their heads down to this girl. And this girl took a step back and was like, what is going on? Eight weeks later, I saw my wife working with this girl for eight weeks. I saw her go get in the truck and take off with her. I'm like, oh, where are they going? She no longer wanted to have the black goth outfit. She didn't want that anymore. She wanted to be a cowgirl. My wife took her down to Boot Barn and outfitted her boots, belt buckles, belts, shirts, pants, cowboy hat. She came back. This girl was beaming, absolutely beaming, walking around that pasture with pride. She took all that black clothes and threw it in the trash and she became a cowgirl. And her goal was to move to Texas and do the same thing or work on her ranch and work with horses. So as far as the few neighbors and the issues, we want to be a good neighbor. We're more than willing to work with any of our neighbors. We've already had discussions with two of them. We will take care of any issues they have. With that, we'll go ahead and open this up for your comments and questions. And thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time. Um, thank you to the Hurleys for your stories. It does come back to the board for questions. Are there questions from the board for the applicant? Commissioner Hudson.
Hi, thank you for sharing all that about what you do and and what led you to the work you're doing today. How many, so you're going to expand from, I think you said your parking lot holds eight cars and you're gonna build another little area for parking. How many, when you were in a camp, how many kids at a time would generally be at the camp?
At the drop-off. During the summer, it varies. So during the summer, we have between six and eight kids per age group. And we break them up between age groups from four to six and and then seven to eleven. So, so during the summer, and that's nine weeks, I guess that's nine weeks, yeah. Nine weeks, totally different. During the school year, so for the other nine months, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And we only have about six kids on Monday, Tuesday and eight kids Wednesday afternoon. So, and they're all dropped off, so nobody stays. So, so it's a very quick. And they all come at different time. So we have two different time zone or time drop-off so that they're not all at the same time so that we don't cause any problems on the road and et cetera.
So during the school year, you said you operate Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? And then in the summer, it's nine weeks of camp.
Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday, okay. And those are just a couple hours, like assuming you have a morning session and afternoon session.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, uh, thank you. That was what I wanted to know.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Molika.
Yeah, just wanted to follow up on that because, you know, it really was impactful that you said you want to be a good neighbor, right? And that's what's really important and, you know, what we want to try and accomplish today. Now, one of the things, just kind of following up on Kathy's questions, is, you know, other traffic, such as when you have parties, you know, food trucks, stuff like that, is all of that off of the public right of way? How do you guys kind of manage those types of events?
We, from the beginning, we've worked to improve things. And one of the things that we had custom made, we actually have signs made that if there is a birthday party or a something on a Saturday, these signs go out and they say no street parking. If somebody parks on the street, they get to deal with me. And it's usually like really quick, like you can't park here. There's plenty of parking over here and we can route them around into the the backside lot. But as far as parking on the street, it's just absolutely not allowed. Can we be perfect all the time? Absolutely not. But if somebody comes up and parks, it's within five minutes. It's like, hey, we want to be a good neighbor. We don't want to block the street. It's a narrow dirt road. There's parking over here. I'll walk them over and show them where to park their car.
That's great. Love the signs.
Great. Thank you. Any other commissioners? Okay, not seeing anyone. If you would like to take a seat.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then we're gonna go to public comment. So let's go ahead and start with public comment. Jamie, who has signed up for public comment today?
Julie Garcia.
Okay. Please come down and state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes to speak.
Good morning. My name is Julie Garcia. My address is thirteen eighty-two Xena Heights Court in Erie. I wanted to just take the opportunity to support the Hurleys today. I'm here as both a parent and educator that deeply values the presence and the purpose of the Giggling Light Farm. I first heard of the farm last summer when my sixteen-year-old son got a job working there. During this last year, I've come to understand what a special and invaluable place it truly is. The farm is more than just a workplace for my son. It's a place where he's learned the value of responsibility, hard work and giving back to his community. He doesn't just go to work to earn a paycheck. He goes because he genuinely loves the animals and the children and he feels a sense of duty to care for them. My son plays high school football, so right now he's waking up at five AM to go to practice. It was because of this that my husband and I were concerned that working at the farm might just be too much for him this summer. However, when we sat him down to have this conversation, he got tears in his eyes and he begged us, he begged us to please let him work there. He wanted to be with the animals. He wanted to be with the kids. And we realized this was And we realized this was not something we could take away from him. Sam feeds, cleans, and cares for animals with kindness and respect. He's learned to treat every living creature with gentleness and dignity. He loves being out there, he's developed a passion for farming that we know he will carry with him. We are so grateful that he's had this opportunity. But beyond my pers- my personal impact on my son, the farm is a vital part of our community. It provides a safe, educational, and healing environment where children, families, and volunteers can connect with animals in the land. As a school principal, I had the opportunity to bring up students on a field trip to the farm this last spring. Many of these students had never seen a farm animal, farm animal up close. They asked questions, they listened intently, and they walked away with a deeper understanding of animal care. It was hands-on learning at its best, and it's an experience that they still talk about today. The animals on this farm are deeply loved and cared for. The Hurleys treat the animals like family. Giggling Life Farm is a deeply meaningful resource that benefits the animals and the community. My son and my students have more compassion and respect for animals because of their time with Giggling Life Farm. Thank you for listening.
Jamie?
Shannon Hopkins.
Hello, I'm Shannon Hopkins, my address is one through three four two Race Street in Thornton, Colorado. Um, and we are in close proximity to the Giggling Life Care Farm, which has been an amazing, um, an amazing opportunity for our family, so I'd like to speak in two capacities, one as a parent and one as a volunteer for the Giggling Life Care Farm. My daughter, we first um, landed upon um, this opportunity to be able to get to know Christie and John and the Hurleys and experiencing um, farm life and horses, um, when my daughter Haley Hopkins was in middle school, and we all know that middle school years can be really tough. Um, and Haley really wanted to be a part of a horse program, so we um, were recommended to the Giggling Life Care Farm and Haley got to start taking riding, um, some riding lessons and playing around with horses and being at the, at some of the camps. And I watched her grow and blossom as a young adult. She learned responsibility, she learned respect, she learned um, to have a new sense of confidence. And that um, really propelled her into uh, more horse opportunities, and so she got to participate in four H, which we all know is a great contributor to the community. Um, and so as a parent, I really got to see her grow as a, as an individual and a confident young woman. And with that, now she's a senior in high school and she still has a love for horses, and she has now um, become an instructor as a teacher along with Christie and has grown so much, and Christie has mentored her as a young woman. Um, in this space of how do you work with animals and care and respect others? Um, and she has grown a lot under Christie and her horse program along with all the other programs that Christie provides, so as a parent, I'm so thankful for all the work that she does for our youth. Um, because I've seen firsthand experience on how that has developed my daughter. As a volunteer, I've gone to be able to participate in her programming and be able to support in ways that I can, and Christie is so intentional about everything that they do from um, her programming, how she develops students, how she um, sets up her structures for the day, parking, um, events, um, everything that she does, that she does with such intentionality. And I really feel that it is a contributor to the community um, in a lot of positive ways because she develops our youth. Speaking about the things that John spoke to, um, just watching kids grow and having an opportunity to participate in working with animals is so important, so I feel very blessed and fortunate that my family's been able to benefit from the Giggling Life Care Farm and horses in particular, because I've watched my daughter just become the woman that she, she is now, um, as a young um, seventeen-year-old, so, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Dawn Hunter.
Hello, my name's Dawn Hunter, I live at one four five two three Cherry Street. I am probably the closest and the most affected by what Chrissy does next door because my fence line is on the north side, right where she does ninety percent of her activities. Um. We're talking about two horses that are already there and giving Christie the opportunity to use those two horses to help kids even more. I'm recently retired from Adams Twelve and had the opportunity to work with um, problem kids, uh, kids that wasn't quite acting the right ways and doing right things and uh, I know for a fact, and I think a lot of people do. Christie doesn't just change. Sorry, of all times for my phone, I have hearing aids, it's going in my hearing aids. Um. Chrissy changes, I look over the fence, I have the best view from anybody on the block. I have the opportunity to look over the fence and watch kids run around and chase chickens and, and sheep and and hug on, on animals and just laugh without a phone in their hand. Or without some type of communication outside that. They talked about it in the parks earlier, about the four H. She does four H, her kids do four H, her friends do four H, and support that to the most, to, to the utmost. Um, she doesn't only help kids, I sorry. I believe she saves lives. And I'm proud of what she does over there. So if I had it in me, I wish I could use my property to do that. And, and benefit kids the way she does. I'm just proud of what she does. And we're talking about two horses that you can hug and you, when you see a kid put up on a horse and the grin, the smiles, the laughter, and the way they change. And the excitement, there's nothing like it, so. That's all I really have to say, other than the dust and the profit on the houses and everything. None of that compares to what's being accomplished over the next door, so. Thank you for listening to me.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Kaylee or Callie Carroll?
Good morning.
Good morning. Um. I am Callie Carroll, I live at one four six eight three Cherry Street, so we're just the neighbor two doors up from Miss Christie, north of her. And first, I'd like to just speak to the street, being a neighbor, and what that's like, being a neighbor to the um, the Giggling Life Care Farm. Uh, I can tell you I have not once had to stop in traffic in all of the years of the business. Um, I see cars come and go, I have four kids myself, I do come and go myself, so I see a lot of the things that happen in the street, but never have I had to stop, I've never seen a car parked on the street unless it's probably at my house and I'm having a little fiesta. Um, so it's, and that's very rare, but their, their street parking is much less than that, or none. Um, and in terms of like the dust that we're talking about, John spoke to the UPS, Amazon, I mean, if there's increase in traffic, it's those guys whizzing down our streets. The traffic that I do see is from, there's multiple business owners on our street is going past our house, way past Miss Christie's, they're not a part of the farm, those are parents, they're, they're carrying precious cargo, they're driving securely, they're safe, they're slow, and they're not in the street, so as a neighbor, just want to share from that standpoint, and um, in terms of Miss Christie, you guys can see the light and love that just pours out of that woman. And I am so blessed, when we finally got to meet each other, it was like these like two rays of light that got to come together and think about how we wanted to save and, and impact this world, and we started this women's program. And you've heard all these things that she's been, well, that's not all, very, very limited amounts of the trauma that she's survived and worked through and grown through. And we wanted to take this program and teach people about gratitude and about a way of living, even when trauma strikes your family, and it was a really cool program, um, really great. But she knew in her heart of hearts that her devotion was to kids and that we have to start with our youth, because for us to know what we're doing, our kids have to know what they're doing, and they don't know what they're doing right now. The social medias, screens, everything is just, it's crazy, and the way that she's able to provide direct support and light to those children is just unbelievable, and um, we stopped that business after my child was diagnosed with cancer, and Miss Christie hosted this incredible foundation and this, this benefit for our family to be able to make it through all of our chemo sessions, and her light that she shines and the program that she's built aren't just a passing by of hanging out with animals. She instills incredible intentional lessons of gratitude, compassion, empathy, servitude, teaching these kids lessons that most adults don't even fully grasp themselves. And when somebody says, hey, where do you live, I'm like that one dirt road, you know, off one hundred forty-fourth, I'm like, oh, are you by the farm? And I always like light up, and they're like, yeah, like I am, I'm actually right down the street, like, I love that place, I've never heard one negative comment in all my years, so I am grateful for Miss Christie, John, and the Giggling Life Care Farm and all they do, and the way they bring light to our community, so thank you.
There's nobody else signed up, but we do have members in the audience interested in speaking.
Great, thank you, Jamie, so members in the audience would like to come and speak if you would make your way down to the podium and just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Dawn Van Camp, I live at one four five two two Cherry Street. I live across the street from the Hurleys and just one house south. And we have nothing wrong with the Hurleys, they are good neighbors. What we have problems with, and this happened last hearing, where we had three homes directly side by side across the street from the Hurleys and seeing all the traffic and the dust and the noise and the manure spread. Now, we just had someone talk about never having to stop ever for that business, well, that's because they live up north, they don't live directly across from the Hurleys. Now, when it happened, uh, when I moved in, I was a retired firefighter for thirty-two years, I wanted to see a quiet enjoyment in the property. Well, it was fifty-eight vehicles a day, then the traffic study from Adams County shows that it was now two hundred and sixty-two. Now, the Hurleys mentioned about Amazon, FedEx, everybody. Think about this, we got a dirt road, only sixteen homes, dead end, no more homes. So think about, even if we have deliveries twice a day on every home, that's an increase of a hundred and seventy-two more vehicles a day. You, you're not looking at what we're seeing, we're seeing the constant flow of traffic and dust and manure and noise. Now, I have a right to a quiet enjoyment, that's the state law. And we need to have a balance between a business and a peaceful neighbor. And I don't know how we're gonna do it when we get the writing stable, when you stamp that commercial, okay, let's do that writing stable. We could also have a, a website, more marketing, more people coming. When we're already pushed to the edge with so much traffic in there, I wish you guys could see what we're seeing. And now, I am also a realtor, nineteen and a half years. Once a commercial business goes across my street and I have a showing, they're gonna go location, locate, oh, what's going on over there, oh, the value goes down. And I hope the county assessor's office realize that and lower my property taxes because of my five to ten percent decrease, which I have proven data that it will decrease, including everybody else on Cherry. That's it, any questions, please ask me, okay? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else from the public that'd like to speak? Can please come down and state your name and address for the record?
My name is Zach Paul, I live at one nine four zero six State Highway fifty-two. I'm emotionally attached to these people and their horses, I educate youth as riders, I'm a horse trainer for a living. I teach their child how to run barrels. Um. Beyond who Christie is and who John is, what their business does, I met them two years ago. Their daughter saw me at barrel race and said, I want help. Will you help me? I said, yes, I love children, I will always teach children. She came to me, Chrissy came with her for her first lesson and told me her story. I said, I needed to know what you do for a living. She said, Giggly Life Care Farm, I take care of children that want to learn agriculture, that need an outlet, that love on horses to improve their trauma. I said, I'm a part of that, I will be there every chance I get. I have been in and out of their property a hundred times in two years. I have never once seen, sir, your trauma of traffic. I have never once seen any overly loud music, I have never once seen a disturbing of manure, I have never once seen a disturbing of traffic or noise or an unpleasant experience, it is contained, it is within hours of business, just like anybody else. And for somebody who teaches children and is so brought to life by horses, I find it impeccable that, or excuse me, I find it disgusting, that some of the community could choose to hate a business that teaches children. In a community that was founded on agriculture that is now being taken over by the city, why would we try to get rid of a business and a place and a home for children to learn about what we were founded on? That's all I have to say.
Great, thank you so much for your comments.
Hello, my name is Taylor Gordon, I live at one three six four three Lilac Street in Thornton. Um, I just, uh, the Giggling Life Care Farm has had a profound impact on my daughter Blake over the past couple of years. We've been a part of the Giggling Life community for a few years now, and last summer is when everything truly changed. Through summer camp and horseback education cla- classes, um, my daughter Blake, who is five, um, had more than just fun, she found confidence, purpose, and a passion. She calls the farm her happy place, a space where she feels seen, supported, and safe to be herself. When she first stepped onto the farm, Blake was very shy and unsure. Um, last time I had her here with me, but today she wanted to stay at the farm, so I just thought I would note that. She told me that it was a little too long, she didn't want to come today. Um, it didn't take long for her to fall in love with the animals and the community, and especially the horses, she attended every week last summer, and from then on, horses became her world. The horse education program has taught her far more than just how to ride, she's learned how to care for them, communicate with them, and build trust. The horses have been her confidants, she always says they know all of her secrets, and the knowledge that she's gained has shaped her in the most beautiful ways. She now teaches me things about horses. This past weekend, Blake competed in her very first Pee-wee barrel race, something we could have only dreamed of before this. And it has only been possible because of the lessons, love, and encouragement she's received at the farm. The Giggling Life has meant so much to our family over the past few years that I dreamed of one day joining Miss Christie and her mission. Six years ago, that dream, or six months ago, that dream became, um, it became true when I joined Miss Christie's team. Her mission is clear in every detail, the care, the intention, and the magic that she creates with every child. Getting to see this every day in person, although I knew that this was a reality for Blake, um, has been completely life-changing for me. Under her guidance, Blake has gained not only skills and knowledge, but confidence, purpose, and joy. Supporting the horse education programs at the farm means supporting kids like Blake's dream. Because now, when she says she wants to be a barrel racer when she grows up, it doesn't feel very far off for us. Please continue to support this special place and kids like Ba- Blake with big dreams that are only possible through her experience at the farm, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to come down and speak to this case? Can please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, everybody, I am Jenna Lynn Schmidt, my first name is J E N A L Y N, it's one word. Um, and I live at one one seven eight zero Jasmine Court in Thornton. Um, so thank you for being here today, I already told you my name, I'm honored to speak behalf of something incredibly special. The Giggly Life Care Farm, this farm is more than a place, it's a feeling, a return to something so many of us grew up with, a simpler childhood, one filled with fresh air, muddy boots, scraped knees, animal hugs, and wide open skies, the kind of childhood where imagination ran wild and connections came easy. Sadly, that kind of life is rare now, our kids are growing up in a world with screens, schedules, and stress. But giggly life brings them back to something real, something grounding. Something that reminds us all of what it means to be human. Here, kids discover confidence by riding horses, they learn responsibility by caring for animals. They build friendship and self-worth, not through absent algorithms, but through dirt, sunshine, and hard work. This farm gives children the kind of magic we all once knew. And in doing so, it also gives parents something precious, the joy of seeing their kids come alive again naturally, fully, freely. A few weeks ago, a six to zero vote showed that Adams County sees the value here. And now we're all one step away from securing this farm's future, so today, I'm asking, let's protect this gift, let's show up, not for a permit, but for a flip, for a place that brings something back that we've almost lost. A slower pace, a deeper breath, a better way to grow. A slower pace, a deeper breath, a better way to grow. I want to ask you, what from your childhood do you cherish but feel that has been lost through the years? And to consider those precious moments are being made today for so many children. I'm a new fan to this farm. I barely know Christie. I didn't even know her last name until today. Cause I was screaming at the other building and I was in the wrong building. Sorry, this morning severely. We are one of those tragedy families. My husband is a vet and he was diagnosed with acute myeloid leukemia. July fifth last year, this man almost died. He went into respiratory failure. He was on life support for ten days. He woke up paralyzed and he said, I'll relearn how to walk. He's a police officer. I have a little girl that's nine and twelve. And it's very hard to imagine that he's probably not gonna be at their wedding. Or the graduation. Sorry. So my little daughter, who's nine, came to the farm a few weeks ago. And I saw a smile on her eyes I hadn't seen in months. Her dad was in the hospital for seventy days during the holidays, not even Thanksgiving, not even Christmas. So I just wanna show you that when I was there, this staff moved. There was, I didn't smell any manure. They moved, but then when my daughter went and told her, she stopped, she slowed down, she accepted her, and she did special things for a little girl that she had just met that day. And my daughter asks me every day, when are we going back? Trying to figure it out. Schedules are a little busy right now with hospital visits. But for a little girl to love so much, she made me bring her a picture. She's the best artist ever to a cow. That's what makes this farm, guys. We're talking about two horses. She has like fifty chickens. She has multiple goats, four cows. It's two horses. There's gonna be no difference. And I tell you, I didn't smell nothing. They were spraying the ground non-stop. It was so hot. And I even have to laugh because my husband did get sick, so we had an Uber home and I stayed. He, when I came in, Taylor was directing that traffic hardcore. She was like a military sergeant. You don't wanna mess with her. Our car was parked, but we had a little overflow, so he drove it to the other lot. I didn't know that. I was standing in the middle of the street, like, where's my car? Where's my car? And luckily, one of the fathers knew where the car was, cause he knew my husband. So, um, that's, this place is on top of it. Okay, they're on top of it. They're sharp, they're fast, they care for those animals, and they slow down for so beautifully in this, for these children. So I probably went over three minutes. I'm sorry.
You did, and I got caught up in your story, so I apologize. You are a time.
I'm sorry. So I just, that's what it's about.
Thank you so much. Okay, anyone else from the public? Yes, if you could please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Dakota Damon. My address is one one seven seven one Ivy Street, Thornton, Colorado. I just wanna say how much Christie has changed my life as I've been an employee here, an employee here for two, three months now, and it's completely changed my life. I've dealt with mental health, depression, and suicide, and I really, it's so beautiful to see how much Christie has slowed down and showed me patience and showed me all these things. I asked God and I was like, I asked him for just a blessing and to show me something and to show me something to slow me down and to just show me just to, just to teach me something. And he put Christie and John Hurley in my life, and they gave me this job opportunity. And I really felt it showed me so many things. I've learned patience. I've learned passion. I've learned so many things through these children, and it's so beautiful to see just all these things. And I just feel like this is a family for me. I really feel like it's my second home. Every time I step onto this, this place, I just, all my worries and all my sorrow is just gone. And these horses, it's, it's beautiful. It really is. And I, I don't really have much to say, but thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Okay, anyone else from the public that would like to come and speak to this land use hear- hearing case? Okay, so we're on now. Um, I don't, there was no request for an applicant response unless there's a request from the board? You do have a question for staff? Commissioner Odoricio, then Pinter.
Yes, I appreciate everyone's testimony and I appreciate the effort of the applicant. What I have to do at this point, um, is ask still questions about how can we mitigate the impacts or, um, cause what we're told today, uh, by the testimonies that there will be no impacts to the folks outside of the fence of the property. I guess my question is, I do, and looking at the packet, I noticed that, uh, particularly uh, in the discussion on development standards and regulations, we do have very specific standards regarding Staples Barns livestock chickens. And, um, also in addition to the development standards about the requirements of riding stable and or academy, or academy. Uh, with that said, I would ask, uh, staff, what kind, kind of play out a scenario in that, um, some of the neighbors who are concerned about potential impacts, let's play out a scenario of what happens or what kind of things can they present to the county, uh, if there are some negative impacts that they feel that they're feeling and how do you, how do you measure a smell? How do, you know, those types of things are things that, those, those challenges come up so often. Trust me, cause I live in Welby, uh, and we get a lot of those smells from the industrial folks. Um, some of the, like the rendering plant and others, and I know how difficult it is to narrow it down. You know it when you smell it, but it's really hard to enforce. So how do we address some of these impacts? And let's go through some of the potentials that might exist and then be able to explain how we would address those. And the reason I say that is because we need to either address those issues and conditions, or we need to put the minds at ease of the folks who are concerned about those, those potential negative impacts.
Yes, thank you. Um, and we, we did, uh, add several conditions as, as David Woski mentioned. Um, because we, we did hear a lot of comments during the, the case that went to planning commission. So we recommended additional four conditions to address a few of those things. Um, but yes, I, I agree. I think there, there are certain things that are difficult to, uh, to enforce. Like you said, a smell, sometimes dust, because it is kind of something that kind of pops up and then disappears. Um, so that's something that, um, we would want to work with our code enforcement team on. Um, providing photo documentation is very helpful, so much can't be done for necessarily odor, but for other things. Um, I, and I, I might actually defer to our code enforcement team to maybe see what they might prefer um, as a best method, um, to receive a complaint. So I believe, uh, Gail Moon is here, um, and I might defer to her for some of this.
Good afternoon. Um, my name is Gail Moon. I am the code compliance supervisor. Yes, these types of complaints are very difficult. Um, per the state statutes, we have to, the code compliance officer has to observe the violation themselves and or have personal knowledge of the violation. So if someone calls in and says that there's a dust issue, unless we observe the dust happening at the time, we don't have much of a case. It's very difficult to enforce. Um, the odor, I do know that our environmental team might have an odor sniffer that they use. I believe they've been trained. We code compliance do not have one of those, but I know there is such a thing. The other complaints about, but the bottom line is, it's very difficult to enforce those types of complaints if they come in randomly on specific days. And then, you know, with our compliance timelines and those types of things, we would have to see a continuation of those issues. So we would have to be there on the right day every single time to see that that issue is happening, and it's very, very difficult.
Great, thank you, Gail. Commissioner, do you have anything else? Okay. So next I have Commissioner Pinter, then Commissioner Molika.
Okay, thank you. Um, I really appreciate those questions. I pulled up on my own the list of conditions to have a good idea of what those are. I am, I had a separate question about the roadway and the signage. Um, I know that sometimes humans do what humans are gonna do despite a good sign. But I'm just kinda curious if staff could comment on what the signage is, um, for speed limits and speed mitigation in addition to, um, parking and parking mitigation, because I saw the applicant putting out their own signs. Um, because it's their guests telling their guests what to do, but like, what is the standard for signage on the roadway to help, um, anyone traveling by know what speed limit is and parking protocols are?
Sure, so I'm actually gonna defer to Matt Emmons, uh, senior engineer. Um, there are certain road cross-sections that allow for parking, but I'm not sure exactly what this one is classified as.
Uh, hi, uh, Matt Emmons, Community Economic Development, uh, senior engineer. Um, so the, the obligations for, uh, signing the roads, uh, typically have to sign at intersections. You have to have at least one stop, uh, one, um, speed limit sign on a road from, I think it's every mile, might be two miles, but, um, at least one, uh, speed limit sign. And there's no requirement for parking signs, and I do appreciate the fact that the neighbor was putting out the stop signs or the no parking signs, but they are not allowed to do that. Um, what should happen is they should apply to, and have those, uh, have, um, to install those signs in the right of way and make sure that they meet all the, uh, the correct times criteria for the, not only the size of the sign, but the size of the lettering, the height of the sign. And it should be, not, not on the side of the road, it should be placed on the edge of the right of way or further away from the road, so it's not a hazard to the traveling public. That would be my suggestion, uh, for, uh, for the applicant here.
Okay, so help me out with that. I appreciate it. Um, I'm just trying to understand, this is, um, a best effort on behalf of the applicant to have their guests comply with the no parking on the roadway. And so I'm just kind of curious, like, what does moving forward look like? Um, what is available for roads like these to get that kind of signage so that it is properly marked? Uh, I think you have to have some empathy for the applicant trying to enforce best practices from their guests. But if there is a more formal way to note the parking restrictions, how do we do that? How do we get from here to there?
So they could apply for, uh, to have this, uh, to install the signs themselves. Um, costs could come out of their pocket. You could also make any condition of approval that they install the signs. Um, that could be the option. Right now, as, as right now, I believe it's a condition of approval to install those signs, so it, you'd have to come from the board or the applicant would have to apply for it.
Okay, do you have some concept of the cost, like if we were to contemplate that, um, process? And I see everyone behind you is talking, so I don't know if you guys wanna like confer. This is a friend-to-friend moment. Y'all like, there's notes going back and forth.
Sure, Commissioners. I'm Jenny Hall, Director of Community and Economic Development. I was just looking specifically at the language for condition number three, which is specific to special events. Um, but of course, that reads that there shall be signs, um, indicating no parking allowed on street posted during those times specifically, but I believe your question is really more for permanent and ongoing.
Well, I'm just, I saw that they were temporary, and I was just kinda curious, like, what the best practice is he, is here. So I had a little bit more of an open-ended question. I saw that, um, but then I had, I saw that the applicant were putting them out, and then I was just kinda curious, what is best practice and what are those signs supposed to look like? If y'all need a minute to talk amongst yourselves, like, we can do that too. I see everyone nodding, yeah.
So, um, I, I, I can answer that question pretty easily. The, the best practice would be to have the signs installed, um, officially and approved by the county. That way the county couldn't enforce on them. Um, right now, the police officers, uh, uh, or parking, um, uh, assistants, I don't think they can enforce on, on the signs that the, the homeowner's putting out there, because it's not a county-owned sign. So I, I think it should be a permanent sign approved by the county. Um, the events, um, the signage they put out there, that's actually very common, uh, for events that we have. If a bigger event, we do ask that they put some kind of traffic control in place, just to let neighbors know that, hey, there's something going on out here and you want, everyone might wanna slow down. So that is, uh, uh, it's two different issues, the, the regular long-term use, everyday use and the events. And I think for everyone's best practice, it should be, uh, uh, permanent stop signs or no parking signs.
Thank you, Matt. Um, I saw a bunch of nodding on the dais, so I'm gonna say something, and if someone wants to disagree, I would like to see you all talk as staff and potentially talk with the applicant and see if the condition three is sufficient. Or if, um, more permanent, what we would need to do to get more permanent signage that complies. Cause it's concerning to me that we have a condition three listed, and then to have Matt, who's the expert, come up and be like, well, you shouldn't do the ad hoc signs, and then y'all literally put we require the ad hoc signs. Can y'all talk to each other about the signs? You know, it's one of the fun parts. Local government, my kids ask me when I come home, do you talk about fences today or signs? And today is a signs day, so talk amongst yourselves.
Okay, we're gonna recess. Well, it's staff talks. We're gonna take a quick recess and we'll reconvene at one o'clock.
Okay, the time is, uh, one oh two. I'd like to reconvene the land use hearing, um, RCU twenty twenty-three dash sixty-eight, the Hurley Writing Academy. So we left off that staff was convening, um, on some language. And so if you want to pick up right there, that'd be great.
Sure, thank you. Um, when we did phone a friend, our Director of Public Works, Brian Staley, so, um, we may, uh, invite him to the podium as well, but we did, uh, work on modifying condition number three, and, and I think he was gonna speak a little bit to that as well.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Brian Staley, Public Works Director. Uh, so, uh, the team explained that there's an interest in having no parking in front of the, along the frontage of this property. Um, so we, we came up with a mechanism using an infrastructure permit to allow the, the property owner to install, uh, no parking signage, uh, to, to restrict it in the event of, uh, uh, overflow parking from the site. Uh, the property owner would then go through a, a normal approval process, and then my team would then take over maintenance of that after the warranty period for installation. I'm happy to, to answer any questions about that process, or others about traffic.
Okay, Commissioner Mulliken.
Uh, specific to the signs, um, would these then be permanent signs that are always in place of this property?
Yes.
In front of the place, okay. Um, and so one of the things, like, do you guys, it, it's still a community, right? There's homes all along it, yes, there is these operations taking place on that property. Um, like, do we look at making sure that they're not very large, like, they, they are something that can kind of blend into the community? One of the things I worry about is, right, if you think about your front yard, do you want to see signs all over the front of it? Like, how do we, um, make sure that it still fits the character of the community? And these are only supposed to be there for special events, so that's why I was curious, why make them permanent? Can we make it so it's not, or is that just not really possible?
So, cou- couple of things there.
Yep, there's a lot there.
So, all, all things are possible, but there's, there's pros and cons.
Okay.
Um, so the, the design of the signs is controlled by a, a manual for uniform traffic control devices.
Okay.
Um, so all signs have to be uniform, um, no matter what, so that everybody, and no matter where you are in the United States, understands what the sign looks like and means.
Okay.
Um, so, little to control there.
Got it.
Um, as far as the temporary versus permanent, because we're, we're not an incorporated city with a, a robust parking enforcement program, um, I'm really reserved about having any kind of one-off, uh, approach to parking. Um, so if we have a temporary enforcement for one property, or
Yeah.
Um, around, around Berkeley is our, our very focus, I'm sorry, uh, the Berkeley neighborhood around, uh, Regis University, is the very small parking program that the county does have. Um, we don't have it anywhere else. Um, so I worry about the confusion that having a one-off parking enforcement program, that putting temporary signs or, or, uh, sandwich board signs for no parking might create. It's possible, and it even doable. Uh, I just have reservations about doing it for one property and the, and the whole county.
And not the others. And how many signs are we anticipating would need to be put in front of that property? Do you know?
The, the proposal that Matt Emmons and I were kicking around is, uh, a permanent sign every fifty feet, so that they're still visible no matter where along the frontage you are. The frontage is about four hundred feet, so we'd, we'd propose four signs.
Four signs, okay. All right, that's my question, thanks.
Okay, um, so the proposal is to do permanent signs.
Yes.
Okay, I guess my only concern with that is that the primary use is still residential. And so my fear is, is that we would add kindling to the fire. Um, and if the resident decided to have as one of the folks that came up and provided testimony, um, a family event, a private event, a party, a graduation, is, I feel that it would restrict them, and so I hear you on, we don't want to do a one-off, but I also don't want to tie the hands of the property owner, and that they also can have guests, they can have a graduation party, or whatever the case may be. Um, and they're there for, you know, a couple of hours, and I'll, I'll have more remarks, um, when we get to the Commissioner deliberation portion. Um, so those, those are my thoughts of, I think it started out as a good idea, but I think permanent signage, um, I just feel that that is a little overkill because it is primary as a resident and not as a business. This is a conditional use for a business. Um, so I would fear just doing a permanent, permanent, something permanent under a conditional use permit. Those are just my initial thoughts.
That's a really good point, Chair Baca.
Uh, Commissioner Odoricio.
Bottom line is, it is a business, and the community around, and the neighbors are worried about that. And so, uh, if this is, uh, if there's plenty of room for parking, whether they're having a birthday party for their personal, not related to their business, on property, then that stays on the property. This is a public, um, public works type issue that, that the neighbors are concerned, that the business will generate more traffic and parking and along a road, and create more burden, potentially even safety. So I'm okay with adding, uh, the requirement that they add the signs to the county standard as determined by Public Works. And then, um, and then I'm also okay with safety valves, if, if there's a rational reason at some point based on the determination by our Public Works Director, that something may not be necessary, then they can, through the consultation and advice of the attorney, may, uh, change that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Brian from the board? Okay, thank you, Brian. So, looking at our, I don't think an applicant response was not requested. I don't feel like it was, unless the board would like to request a response from the applicant from the public comment period. Not seeing any. So then let's go to Commissioner discussion, and then a motion at that point. Um, I'm gonna start us off. So I think it matters. Commissioner Odoricio, let me back up. First of all, I want to thank, um, those that stayed today for public comment to hear this land use hearing. So we're in it for almost coming up on four hours, so thank you for your patience and time, um, to stay and to provide your testimony and comment, and to obviously present your application to the Board of County Commissioners. Um, I grew up in unincorporated Adams County. My mom and dad still live in what is my second childhood home. So they've been at that property for over forty-five years. Uh, it is zoned agricultural. I did grow up with horses myself. Um, and at the ripe age of eighty-two, my parents, uh, convinced by their very young grandchildren, decided to take on three chickens and a duck. And the, a level of excitement that has created, and the amount of joy that I see in my parents, um, not that they didn't see their grandchildren all the time, almost every day, anyway, now they see them several times a day and on the weekends, and um, everyone is taking joy, they like taken down the dog run, and now they have like a little condo for the chickens and the duck. Um, they live a great life. So, you know, listening to this, I think it matters. And where I was going with my comments is Commissioner Odoricio is our only county commissioner that currently lives in unincorporated Adams County. Um, I grew up in Brighton, I, my folks still live in the same property now for over forty-five years. I grew up with horses, my friends, it's a horse community. My friends also in the neighborhood, they had horses, and we'd all ride horses. If you're familiar, um, with the Kmart Distribution Center in Brighton, it, we used to ride from that neighborhood just west of the Kmart Distribution Center, it's Welch's Acres, all the way to, uh, Interstate seventy-six, because it was open land. There was no houses, there was no industry, there was, there was nothing. And honestly, growing up in town, there was nothing, um, east of Eighth Avenue and Bromley Lane. So it was out in the sticks when I was growing up. Um, my folks, my family, so two parents, we started with two drivers forty-five years ago. Uh, my siblings and I, we added, as we came to age, we added four more drivers. So we're at six drivers. Um, then my siblings, they, they got married, and now we have nine drivers. And then my, there're two, my two nieces, my parents' oldest grandchildren, um, are also drivers, and so now we have eleven drivers. And the two littles have very convincingly, um, have made many, many trips, even though they are not of the age of driving, convincing their parents and their grandparents, um, to pick them up many, many times to go visit the chickens and the duck, and the dog. And so just that alone, and the number of times, I make it a point, um, I talked earlier at the meet and greet, uh, these positions of leadership and the demand, and the importance of family, and the importance of connectivity, and And it really is that interconnectivity in our family that the joy that, you know, with three chickens and a duck. Our family is guilty, um, that at times we have our own family vehicles during Christmas, during birthdays, during graduations, um, whatever major life celebration, and we park on the rideaway of a dirt road that my parents live on. Um, myself, I make it a point, being the county commissioner, uh, to have dinner with my folks once a week. Sometimes it's at their house, sometimes we go out to dinner. I also make it a point to have breakfast with them at least once a week. Um, the likelihood of me being at my parents' house three to five days a week, most days of the year, most weeks of the year, um, is greater than fifty percent. So they come and go, my mom come and go. All of my siblings live in the Brighton area. We're within a three-mile radius of my family's house. So I can look at our, my own family and see that our own family probably produces twenty trips a day from their house, whether it's we're stopping in to visit chickens and ducks, I'm stopping in to talk to my folks and visiting with them. Um, it's a constant state of movement at their house. And so, yes, there's Amazon drivers, yes, there's Uber Eats, yes, there's FedEx, yes, there's a lot of things. Um, my folks live in a really established neighborhood. More neighbors in that neighborhood have been there for twenty or more years, and I anticipate that they also have similar family circumstances, where you have started maybe with the mom and two parents that are driving, and now siblings drive and grandkids drive, and everyone's driving. Um, we're also growing as a county, and I understand the concern of dust mitigation. Absolutely, one hundred percent. I also understand now as a commissioner, the challenges we have, um, at the county with the majority of our roads off of I-seventy-six, um, as you go east are dirt roads, except for the major thoroughfares. And it's the conditions of the road really impacts what dust that you see. So yeah, is it traffic? It is. Is it dry conditions? It is. Um, the biggest contributor to dust is speeding. I think hands down that speeding is a big contributor to dust, and that is monitored, that is enforced by the Sheriff's Department. So, you know, I do appreciate, um, the amount of traffic. I understand that the dust, that whether it's this business, whether it's neighbors having fiestas and parties as someone provided testimony, um, that there is traffic. But I also believe in my values is that connectivity matters. And I think that that's what I've heard throughout, and it's something that this Board has talked about when we talk about the tapestry of community, when we talk about connectedness. Um, about this time last year, uh, we had a gentleman talk under public comment, um, of all the news that he was watching, and I did suggest that maybe we get away from our screens and we go out for a walk in nature. And so I appreciate the business. As one gentleman stated, it's two horses that are already there. It is, I, while I do look at the community benefit, I do look at, and I believe and I say in my speeches, of thanking people for taking care of our families and our kiddos. Um, it's really now more than ever when we look at our kids. And I look at my nieces and nephew, and I look at kids, while we were sitting here, uh, federal policy has been passed. We look at the impact of what decisions we make as leaders and elected officials that we have on kids. And it's really those nonprofits, it's those small businesses, it's those community leaders, it's those folks that have passion to take care of families and kids. And whether they do that through talk therapy, whether they do that through a talk line that your family can call up and you can get connected to services, um, or you do that through animals, or you do that through recreation, or you do that through our Parks Department, who we, um, had here earlier today, is that as a Board, um, especially to our Parks Department, that our parks are accessible, that they're free, that there's beauty in them, that they're well taken care of, and they're maintained. Um, similar to my comments on the previous land use hearing, is that we're here for the public safety, um, health and well-being of our residents and our occupants here in Adams County, our family and our community. Um, dust happens. And I think when that happens, the best thing we can do is ask applicants, and we ask neighbor, we ask the, whether it's a small business or a nonprofit. There's a nonprofit out east, Sunflower Ranch, who I love. Um, that we ask businesses to be good neighbors and to put in all of the mitigation efforts that they can, whether it's adding parking signs, whether it's adding dust abatement, um, whether it's water or chemical, um, that they have staggered. Thank you for providing onsite parking. Thank you for providing staggered schedules, so we don't have an onslaught of, you know, whether it's students or families dropping off kids. Um, all of those things matter when we look at mitigating impact. So I support this today. Um, I feel that not only does the service to community, but I feel like that all of those conditions that we can talk about, I would still like to talk about the signage and what impact that is to the residents. Um, I don't want that to also be a complaint. You see one car in front of a parking sign. You know, I, I understand the dynamics of neighbors, neighborhoods, um, but I want to thank the applicants and all those that spoke today for being here. So thank you. Other Commissioners would like to talk in their deliberation? I don't see anyone. Commissioner Molika.
Yeah, can you just go back to the condition that was updated? I just want to reread it again before we vote. Okay, so all parking spaces, okay, signs approved in advance by the county. So, so these, we had a lot of discussion, so I'm just trying to figure out where we landed. These are going to be permanent signs that are placed out in front of the property. Is that what we decided?
That's correct, and they would be installed by the applicant after getting approval from the county through the infrastructure permit.
Okay. All right, and that was the decision of this Board that we wanted to have the permanent signs? Because there was discussion about not permanent signs, so then it got kind of lost.
I, I honestly don't know where we landed.
Okay, great, I'm not alone.
I don't think we landed.
We didn't land.
But, okay, so you're spot on.
Yeah.
You have the, the floor.
Okay.
The talking stick.
I, I personally would support not having permanent signs, um, just because this is a neighborhood and this is residential area. So, um, that's my take.
What's the, okay, then what's the solution to? Do, do we want them to change what they're currently doing with putting out the sign, the, the temporary no parking on street signs that they do by event, as, you know, as events at their home slash business, um, when those occur? Do we want, if we don't want permanent signs, do we want to encourage them to continue not allowing parking on the street, to encourage people to use the parking? Or parking, I don't know what the answer is.
Yeah, and I guess, um, Steph, what is the recommendation? What options do we have here when it comes to specific signs?
Yes, thank you. I was actually also trying to think through what might be another alternative as well. Um, this use in particular, uh, the, the Writing Academy, I should not truly generate parking that is overflowing onto the roadway.
Mm-hmm.
There may be other special events that, uh, you know, may be allowed through the agritourism, agri- agretainment use, or may require additional permitting through an event center permit, if that's what the applicant wishes to pursue. That would be evaluated at that time. Um, I might recommend, if, if you are not interested in having the permanent signage, that if they are proposing to have an event, to plan ahead, to get a, um, and I might ask Matt to come up again, because he had mentioned during our conversation earlier that, um, there's a plan that they could submit, um, that would show, uh, traffic cones and other types of temporary signage approved by the county. Um, but that might be more of kind of on a, on a one-off basis and less permanent, which sounds like you might be interested in.
Yes, I mean, I think that Commissioner Baca's point is very good, that if we, the permanent signs are obviously problematic because they, they don't really apply a hundred percent of the time, which is, which is not, which is not a good outcome. So are we talking about that we want to, are you saying that we would be, ask them to apply for a separate kind of, a different kind of permit? Or that we would incorporate it into these conditions?
So I think to, to Jen's point, the conditional use permit is specific to the, the Writing Academy aspect of it. And so there's a rationale for just making your decision about these conditions specific to the Writing Academy function. And then at a future date, if the applicant wanted to pursue a conditional use permit for an event center, if they were expanding more into that space, or if we were talking about special events, that parking accommodations, whether that was a temporary plan or something more permanent, be evaluated at that time with that proposed use.
So it sounds like we're wanting to change the language in the conditions again, based on our discussion up here.
I, I would support changing the language. We have support of the Board. I don't know where we lands on it.
Consensus on that to?
Yeah.
Uh, my hand is still up, so.
You still, you still want?
Are we all like chiming in, or should I, can I, can I offer a thought? Okay, I really appreciate that. Um, I hear you that this is a residential space. I actually think that our parking signage is sometimes more intricate and present in residential spaces. Maybe not on your street, but as we have these uses coming up against each other, like, I know that like, I have definitely spent time going back and forth on a block and being like, where can I park? Oh, no, this is resident only. Oh, wait, that one's for trash. Oh, wait, that one's just no parking. Okay, that one's just loading. Like, I do live in a city, but we are having neighbors next to each other, and it is a very American thing that good fences make good neighbors. I think good signage is sort of like the parking equivalent of that. And so I don't have any worries about additional parking signage done in the most appropriate way, legally compliant way, because I think that gives clarity. Like, this is just, these are the parking rules. And I hear what you're saying about like guest numbers fluctuating. I think it's actually more onerous that they have to put out parking permit signage like every single time they do a special event versus like what is standard practice, which is there is no parking on this roadway. And so I think it's actually, my perception is that it's less of a burden to just say there's no parking on this roadway, it's too small. And, uh, you know, we have some streets like that in Westminster, to speak to, I live in a city. But we also have some parking programs, you know, and frankly, Sherwood also have, that does not have the parking permit, um, pilot, uh, parking permit pilot, if you guys want to say that three times fast, also has signage about resident parking or two-hour parking or no overnight parking. There's all kinds of signs that we've all metabolized in residential areas. So I don't see it as the burden, but I also just want to get this right, and I'm happy to work with the majority of my Board slash our land use experts to get this as close to right as we possibly can with the lowest burden. Doesn't land.
Well, no, I would, I was curious. As, did you already speak about, because you're the, like, to someone's point, you're the one who lives in unincorporated, so I mean, what's your, what are your thoughts on the sign?
I, I think, look, look, I don't, I don't think that, I think that given the fact that it is a business or an organization that is being run from a residential plot, I think it's just safest to have the signs out there and address that issue rather than have them be placed out there on a temporary basis, which is not legal or enforceable. And we already heard that today. Um, and so, um, I'm okay with, I don't, I don't think it's as bad or as burdensome to do that. And I think if anything, that Nate, I think I kind of saw the applicant say, whatever it takes to make it work. We don't want them out there on that road anyway, because those will be their guests and customers that could potentially be on a dangerous road that we don't want people walking around on, especially if they're there for the other purposes of attending or participating in that organization. So I just, I'm okay with the signs. So I think we, we, let's address the sign issue and move on. And if it means that we.
And vote.
Vote, like, yeah, do we, do we want the signs? Take the temperature of the Board, and then if, if, if three people don't want the signs, then we remove that new, uh, piece. And if not, then we move on.
So I'm just, I appreciate that, Commissioner Odoricio, um. You are our only representative that currently lives in unincorporate Adams County, and your district does represent the highest number of density in unincorporated Adams. So what we're talking about here are sixteen homes on a dead-end road that are in country estates, which is similar to what my folks have. Um, and so I think for a probably less than a five-hour event to have permanent signage in a residential area is a little bit of overkill. Um, so I will not support an amendment that will include permanent signage.
Okay, therefore I'd like to offer an amendment to remove condition three from the recommended conditions on this list.
So just the changes of the whole number three?
Change, because we can't have temporary signs.
Can we have it set up in our parking spaces that we're looking at our parking lot?
Can someone, yeah, we, you said,
We don't want to get rid of the thing.
Well, I'd like some staff clarity, because we had, you all deferred to Matt as the expert, and Matt came to the podium and said, no, you're not allowed to have temporary signage, so I'd like you all to tell us what to do.
Sure, I think if the Board consensus was to not have signage, then the cleanest way to amend condition three would be to strike everything after the county's rideaway shall not be allowed. So you would begin to strike there as, as it's being highlighted. Because we do still want to have the language in the conditions, I believe, about the parking on the property.
And they can still go through a permit process for one-offs? If that's the case.
Yes, and I, I did get the correct language from Matt. It's a traffic control plan, um, and that would be for specific events. We, we do that throughout the county for any, any type of use. If they need to control traffic in any manner, um, whether it's for parking or need to adjust lanes on the roadway, they can apply for a traffic control plan review, um, and then have that approved on a one-off basis as needed.
Great, thank you, Jen.
Okay, I would like to move that we strike the language as indicated by staff.
So a full motion with the, the language amendment? What would be best?
Yeah, like.
Dear lawyers. I think you need to, um, vote on amending condition number three to start. And then if that motion passes, then you vote on the main motion as amended.
Thank you. So I'm going to move that we, um, modify condition three by striking the sentence that we're currently seeing in red. No parking allowed on street signs approved in advance by the county through an infrastructure permit shall be posted along the applicant's property during special events.
Second. And the motion passes, uh, four to one. So now we need a motion for, do you want to just do it again?
Yes, so I move to approve RCU twenty-three dash six, oh, thank you. I move to approve the conditional use per- permit for RCU twenty-three dash sixty-eight with eight findings of fact, twelve conditions of, of approval, and one note as modified.
Second.
You guys have to press the buttons or we can't vote. I'm here for you.
And the motion passes five to zero. Okay, good luck to your business, and thank you for what you do for community. And we are adjourned, uh, today at one thirty-three P.M.